I'd like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order on February 15th, 2017. We will start the meeting with a moment of silence at the request of Ms. Allison Satterwhite from the Gainesville District. And for the pledge of allegiance today, if you don't mind, Mr. Bryant, I'll kick it to you for this one since I'll give you the honor. So I'll let Mr. Bryant introduce our pledge speakers today.
Okay, our pledge tonight will be done by troops 2173, a Girl Scout troop from Gainesville Middle School, and also we're represented by Marsh Teller Middle School as well. So, girls, whenever you're ready, come on up and get us started, please.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you could come to the mic, tell us your name, your grade, and where you go to school.
Sophia Brand, 7th grade, Gainesville Middle School.
Hello, my name is Julia Martin and I am a 7th grader at Gainesville Middle School.
My name is Gracie Pope Graham and I am a 7th grader at Marsh Teller.
My name is Tyler Smallwood, I'm a 7th grader at Gainesville Middle School.
Elena DeShino, 7th grade, Gainesville Middle School.
Callie Snowy, 7th grade, Gainesville Middle School.
Delaney Drago, 7th grade, Gainesville Middle School.
Alexa Bajori, 7th grade, Gainesville Middle School.
Eliza Nuzzo, 7th grade, Gainesville Middle School.
Thank you. All right, moving right along here, as Ms. Jessie throws things at me, moving right along to the approval of the public meeting agenda, motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Ralston, thank you. Discussion? Yes? Dr. Walts?
I know this is unprecedented. I was just informed that the brief Fred Lynn Middle School update, that they have about 50 teachers and community members and church members here just to support the presentation. I don't know if the board would maybe move that in front of citizens. Certainly, it's the chair and the board's decision, but it is a brief presentation. None of those people are speaking, it's just they're here to support, but...
Absolutely, we can do that with unanimous consent after the motion. We can leave the motion as is and just ask unanimous consent of the board to move up. So, okay, any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Deutsch, motion passed.
All right, moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. If I can click on the right button, 1301, a motion is in order. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion? Ms. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to refer to item 1303, Digital Learning Day, and I have, I'd like to introduce this, it relates to technology, and I have a slide, I'd like to have that slide placed up this time. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce you to Future Kings. Future Kings, on February 11th, they had their third Black History Month Gala. I was asked to make remarks, but I was just so impressed with these young men. They are, their goal is engineering, I'm sorry, the theme was engineering a path to entrepreneur success. The founder and executive director, Mr. Eric King, a math teacher at Hampton Middle, says the following: "Future Kings starts with the premise that students will enter the post-secondary world will be different, that it will be different from the world that currently exists." These students were the MCs and ran the program. My husband and I sat at a table with a young man named Daniel Torres, a Hilton student who plans to enter cybersecurity. He developed an award-winning motorcycle engine and won a $5,000 award. I sat next to a young man named Delon Northam from Garfield, who wants to be, he's going into the field of apparel design. He's one of those kids that, when I was a principal, they would come to my office and say, "This kid is doing nothing." And I would ask the following question: "What is he doing while he's doing nothing?" And the answer was, "He's playing in his desk." And inevitably, I would find this child who was an artist and had artistic ability. So, the fact that he's going into apparel design is, I think, very notable. Also, I want to say that there was a speaker for the evening, was Dr. Sasha Cunningham, who earned a degree in molecular biology from Princeton, and he works with the students who are interested in the area of precision medicine. He resides in this area, and to people, some people on the board will know this individual. He is the son-in-law of our former associate superintendent, Fay Patterson, and he is sharp as all get out. I would like to invite these young men to the boardroom along with the MLK Youth Oratoricals at some time in the future, and I'll talk to Dr. Walts about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to recognize Music in Our Schools Month and bring special attention to a 1990 graduate from Woodbridge Senior High School. At the time, Woodbridge, well, up until it just moved to Center for Performing Arts and Music, I was there in 90, it wasn't quite called that, but Woodbridge was still very heavy in music and theater arts. His name is Zoo Bailey, and he won a Grammy for the Best Classical Instrument Solo with Tales of Hemingway. So, we have another Prince William County graduate who has reached the stage and screen coming from Woodbridge in the arts program. So, I just wanted to bring special attention to that since it's Music in Our Schools Month and Theater in Our Schools Month, and just send congratulations to him and pay special attention because I think sometimes music and arts are often left by the wayside, but they are very important to growth and development of good citizens in our county. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? I would just briefly say, I was going to mention the Music in Our Schools Month and the Theater in Our Schools Month as well, and I know personally, this was not something that I was involved as a child, but my son has embraced both of those at Gainesville Middle School. It's been a wonderful experience for him in both, and I'm tickled that he's teaching me about those things along the way. So, it's very interesting as a parent to be involved in those. And last but not least, so my dad doesn't drive down from Western Maryland and hit me over the head, a newspaper journalist since 1979, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention newspaper, newspapers and education week and the pivotal role that they play, not only in our schools, but in our county as well. So, thanks, Dad. Make sure I get that in. But no, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. With that, call the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
I will, this is where I'll jump in with what Dr. Walts said earlier. With unanimous consent of the board, we can go ahead and move up the middle school presentation. We'll do that now, and then we'll handle item 14.01. So, without objection. So, moved. We will jump ahead, and we find it, we are now on item 16.01, Fred M. Lynn Middle School Corrective Action Plan Update. Dr. Walts.
Mr. Bixby.
No, that's you. Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairman Jessie, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. Joining me this evening is Fred Lynn Middle School Principal, George Neves. We appreciate this opportunity to provide the school board with an overview of the school's corrective action plan. First, Mr. Neves would like to introduce members of the Fred Lynn community who are joining us this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairman Jessie, members of the school board, Dr. Walts. It's my great pleasure to introduce to you some members of our school community. I'll start with Mr. Frazier. Mr. Frazier is the chairman of our advisory council and the president of our PTSO. I would like to introduce some members of a Grace Lutheran Church, Grace Lutheran Church, which are of strong support at Fred Lynn. You please stand. Ms. Jessica Parker, she's a principal on special assignment. Ms. Sherrod Thomas, Assistant Principal. Ms. Audrey Bearman, Assistant Principal. And then, will the remaining members of our school community please stand? Okay, thank you. At the January 18th school board meeting, the board approved the memorandum of understanding between the Virginia Board of Education and the Prince William County School Board and Fred Lynn Middle School. The key component of the MOU is the development and implementation of a corrective action plan. Tonight's goal is to orient you to the corrective action plan with subsequent board presentations in March, April, May, and June. At those school board meetings, Mr. Neves and I will report on the school's progress towards completing the plan. The plan developed out of the school's work over the past year with the State Department of Education to address the school's need to improve student achievement in English and science with an emphasis on English learners. As you can see, the plan contains four components: the essential action, the responsible persons, the monitoring person, and documentation towards progress and completion. The first essential action focuses on improved literacy practices and best-practice instructional strategies, and a focus on the alignment of the planned, taught, and assessed curriculum in the areas of content and rigor. The school has an array of staff members focused on implementing this essential action while the school-based administrators and the associate superintendent work to monitor and guide the implemented practice. The second essential action focuses on professional development for all teachers to accelerate the English language learners. This follows the same format of implementation and monitoring. The third and final essential action is the implementation and monitoring at the International Baccalaureate Middle Year Program, IBMYP. The school has trained its staff in IBMYP instructional practices and completed its authorization visit in December of 2016. This spring, we will receive the results of the visit to determine if Fred Lynn will become an IBMYP-authorized school like Stonewall, Hampton, and Bevel Middle Schools. Fred Lynn's staff will continue to work hard to implement quality instruction to support student achievement for all our students. We look forward to returning on March 15th to provide you with an update on the school's progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to take a minute to thank you for all of the hard work that you've put in thus far and taking the time to present this plan to the board in such a clear and concise manner. I've visited Fred Lynn on numerous occasions, and I can see the family that you have built from the staff and the way the students respond to you. I am very excited about the possibilities with this corrective action plan and have faith in its succeeding. So, I just wanted to take the time to say thank you. I recognize all of the work that your staff has done, and thank you for coming this evening for us.
Thank you. Ms. Jessie?
I also want to thank you. I've worked with Fred Lynn for quite some time, you know, I was next door, and my two girls went to Fred Lynn also. So, I go way back with Fred Lynn. I went to the Virginia Department of Ed, and I looked at the, they have what's called a quality profile, and I kind of looked for areas that, there's lots of things that you're working on, I can see, and there are areas that, for growth. I want to commend you and the staff for coming here tonight. The fact that you're here says something about who you are, and I know that this is going to be a major challenge, but I'm just here to tell you that it's possible that you guys will do well, and just keep your personal goals. There's going to be a lot of people telling you what to do, and it's very important that as a staff, you know what your goals are. And I just want to thank you for what you've done at Fred Lynn, and just appreciate the work of your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Getting back on track with the planned agenda here, we are on item 14.01, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Mr. Klein?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Dr. Walts. Each year, Prince William County Schools has an external audit performed by a firm of independent certified public accountants as required by the Code of Virginia. Their purpose is really twofold. One is to have them form an opinion on our comprehensive annual financial report, which is really our financial statements, and as well as to perform audit work on the single audit which relates to federal monies that we receive each year. This evening, we'd like to have Mr. Greg Miller from the firm of Cherry Becker provide a brief report. But first, I'd like to just briefly thank Mr. John Wallingford, our finance director, Lisa Thornises, our supervisor of accounting, and Carolyn Adams-Rosignol, our chief accountant, who are certainly responsible for the preparation of all of our financial statements. Thank you very much. And I'm certainly thrilled that we have such large attendance tonight. I'm sure all of them came for the highly exciting moment of the audit report this evening. So, Mr. Miller?
My name is Greg Miller. I'm with Cherry Becker, the auditors for Prince William County Public Schools. I believe everyone's received a copy of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as well as a copy of our slide deck that we'll be going through briefly this evening. First of all, thank you for entrusting Cherry Becker with the audit of your financial statements. This is a responsibility that we do not take lightly. At the end of the day, this is your final product. These are your financial statements that were prepared by management under your oversight and guidance. Our audit does not relieve the board or management of their responsibility for these financial statements. With the, on the next slide is a table of our contents, a roadmap for this evening. I'm aware the agenda's full, so I'll try to go through these as briefly as possible. Skipping to page five is what's included, yes, ma'am? All right. All right, so on page five is a roadmap for what's included within these financial statements. Your financial statements not only include Prince William County Public Schools, but they also include the school activity funds, which is included as an agency fund, as well as the Education Foundation for Prince William Public Schools, which is new for fiscal year 16, and is presented as a discreetly presented component unit. Both the SAFs and Spark are audited by other auditors, in which we make reference to in our audit opinions. Skip through to slide nine. We were engaged to provide an audit over the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Our audit includes issuing opinions on the basic financial statements and the notes to the financial statements, which are found within the financial section of the CAFER. We issue an in relation to opinion on the supplemental information, which is also within the financial section of the CAFER. And then, we do not audit the introductory section, the required supplemental information, or the statistical sections of the CAFER. Within the audit, as Mr. Klein mentioned, there's also other reports included within the CAFER, which include our report with compliance over governmental accounting standards as well as compliance requirements with this federal single audit or Title II, the federal Also, within our engagement letter are other reports, primarily the report on the examination of management assertions associated with census data that was reported to the VRS that is used to calculate your pension liabilities. The slide that probably everyone wants to see is a summary of our audit results. We did issue an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. It is the highest level of assurance that we can issue on your financial statements. We did, in our report over government accounting standards, we did identify one control deficiency of our payroll, which we consider to be a material weakness, and we also did not note any instances of noncompliance during our procedures. The next couple of slides are required communications as it relates to the auditing standards. The first part is the accounting policies. Accounting policies with fiscal year 16 were essentially the same with fiscal year 15, so the policies remain consistent with the exception of the implementation of a new GASB, GASB 72, over the fair value reporting of assets. During the preparation of the financial statements, there are many estimates that are taken into account that are subjected to management's judgment. Those items include allowance for doubtful accounts, pension, OPEB, healthcare credits, risk management claims, incurred but not reported liabilities, capital asset, useful lives, and pollution remediation liabilities. During the course of our audit, we did make one, proposed one adjustment for the financial statements, in which we identified a construction invoice that was improperly excluded from construction and progress and accounts payable. Management did post that entry, and it is reflected within the financial statements. The next two bullets look a little ominous, but I'm just required to inform you if there were any disagreements with management or if we encountered any difficulties while performing our audit. I'm pleased to say that we did not have any disagreements or have any problems performing the audit. I'd like to extend my appreciation for John Wallingford, Lisa Thornises, and Carolyn Adams-Rosignol for their work and support with getting everything ready so that we can audit the financial statements. If we were to come aware during our audit that management has consulted with other accounting firms for perhaps a different opinion on how accounting items should be reported, we'd be required to report that to you. We are not aware of any such consultations with other auditors. Within the course of our audit, there are also material client communications. One consists of a management representation letter that we receive, which is management asserting to us that what they provided us is everything associated with the financial statements, and that we also provided a management letter with some control implementation recommendations. Both of those were issued on December 8th. And lastly, I'm also required to affirm to you that we are independent of Prince William County Schools, both in fact and in appearance. The last few slides, I won't go into details, but they outlay the upcoming accounting standards that will be changing for the next couple of years. If you have any questions or concerns on how those will affect the school board, my contact information is on the last slide, and feel free to reach out to myself or John Gilberta, who is the partner on this engagement.
Thank you. Mr. Miller? Any questions or comments from the board? Well, they did turn the volume up, didn't they? Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, going back to slide 16, can you just go into a bit more detail on this construction invoice? I guess we kind of glossed over, but I guess it's a little over half a million dollars. Just curious what was going on there?
Sure. During our audit, we always do a search to determine if items were properly cut off and items got reported in the proper year. During our AP search, we noted one check that was associated with a new construction project. It was the first invoice associated with that contract, and the invoice did not include, the invoice that came from the contractor did not include in-service dates. So, it was difficult to identify which period those fall in. After further investigation, those amounts were for activities in June, so the amount should have been included in the financial statements as accounts payable as well as CIP. The net effect of that journal entry had no effect on net position at the end of the day for the school board.
So, it was something that had been reported, but just not on what you all viewed as the correct financial year? Is that essentially what you're saying?
Excuse me, sorry, I didn't...
It was money that had been reported before, but just not categorized in the right financial year?
Correct. It was recorded within the financial system. It just was in July versus in June, so to put it in June's would be in fiscal year 16 versus in fiscal year 17.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to citizens' comment time. We will get through roughly 10 to maybe 12 of the first speakers before we move on per policy, and then we'll handle, take, move on to the rest of the business. And then, everyone else who doesn't make it in the first round, we will come back and there will be, we'll have additional time at the end of the meeting. We have, I'm going to call up the first 10 speakers. We have several group speakers today, but we, I'm going to call up the first 10 speakers, so you can take one of the reserved seats in the front, or if you're sitting close enough, you're free to sit where you already are. So, the first 10 speakers will be Brendan Schmidt, second speaker Jennifer Bermudez. The third is group speakers Lauren Warner, Kelly Crocker, and Noah Wong. The fourth is also group speakers Ardine Kim, Said Sekhrib, and Yamin Sarista. Fifth is Elizabeth Humphries. Six, Jamel Scott. Seven is DS Grimes. Eight is Pat House. Nine, Bill Hoss. And 10, Milt Johns. So, we'll get going that way. As we're getting organized here, I'll remind everybody that citizens' time, you get three minutes. I will run the clock here from my computer. The timer will run on the screens above you that you can see. At 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow, that means it's time to wrap it up, and at zero seconds, it'll turn red, and we'll ask you to step aside. Remember that proper decorum is asked at all times. If not, you'll be asked to step aside, and I think I covered everything else. That's about right. So, I will call up, the first speaker is Brendan Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, member of the board, Dr. Walts. My name is Brendan Schmidt, and I am a junior at Patriot High School. I'm here to tell you about my experiences in the career and technical education in the HVAC dual enrollment program. As part of this program, I spend my half, half of my days as a student at Patriot High School and the other half at the Northern Virginia Community College in Woodbridge. When I graduate from high school, I will have earned 19 college credits. I applied to this program because my family is in this industry, and I've been doing it on the side, and I honestly just fell in love with the entire industry. I really enjoy this program because it's a lot of hands-on, and it's not just facing the books, you know? I'm more of a hands-on kind of guy. I feel successful because not only am I going to high school for half the day, but I'm also going to college and earning college credits, and I'm just kind of knocking it all out as soon as possible. But I would love to invite all of you to visit us at Nova so you can see all the exciting things we do. Thank you for your support of career and technical education and this opportunity to share the details of our amazing program with you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Jennifer Bermudez. Jennifer?
Hello, board. Well, my name is Jennifer Bermudez, and I'm from...
One second, Jennifer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. We can lower this down for you.
Thank you.
Jennifer, this is his only job, just so you know. So, you want to keep me in work, right? Yeah, thanks. There you go.
All right. Hello, my name is Jennifer Bermudez, and I am a student at Freedom High School. And not only am I a student for dual enrollment for HVAC, I'm also a student for the dual enrollment classes at Freedom. I currently take dual enrollment speech, dual enrollment English 12, and dual enrollment HVAC. And this opportunity, I think, is something every student should embark on if they have the opportunity. If they can't transfer to Freedom, that's no problem, but the whole opportunity of HVAC is you're learning a trade skill, and I think learning a trade skill in high school, given the opportunity to learn it at such a young age, is essential for your life. Because not only can it be a great career path, it can also be a great Plan B for a chance, if you want a career after high school, or... chance, if you want a career after high school, or perhaps you want to major in something else, but you still have an interest in HVAC. It's also a great Plan B. And another great thing about the HVAC program is early college experience. Not only do I take dual enrollment classes at my own school, I have to commute to Nova and attend a class there. So therefore, I receive college experience at the actual campus. I am in the setting with an actual professor, students such as Brendan, and I also have actual college students in my class as well. And not only being an HVAC student, I'm also one of two females in that class. So as a female, we're always looked down on, especially in such hands-on careers. We're now look, we're looked down upon. And knowing that me and one other female have embarked on the opportunity to do something mostly dominated by men makes me proud. I'm not too sure what to say. I'm really nervous. But, um, I don't, I really don't know. That's all I got.
Right, then one more group speaker. I'm sorry, we have two more. Lauren Kelly and Noah. Props.
We are a group of students from the Governor's School at Innovation Park. My name is Kelly Crocker. My base school is Battlefield.
My name is Noah Wong. My base school is Battlefield High School.
My name is Lauren Warner. My base school is Brentsville.
We are here to talk to you today about the innovations class that is offered at the Governor's School. This is a semester-based class in which groups of students are permitted to choose an area that they want to explore and design a project and produce a prototype or proof of concept over the course of the semester. The requirements for the project are that it has to be a humanitarian-based project, which we thought was really cool. It creates a bunch of different ideas throughout the class. You learn as much from other groups researching as you do from researching your own project, and it's a great cooperation effort.
So, excuse my cold. So our idea was called Project Dante, and it was a simple enough idea in that it was a helmet and mask combination with an infrared heads-up display to help firefighters see through smoke, hands-free. Rather than bore you with all the technicalities of its design and function, and I'm going to go ahead and address the research behind it. So with a project of this nature, the research is broad and varied, and really takes you beyond the scope of what you can find in a traditional classroom. It brings up questions like, how do you turn a normal webcam into an infrared camera? How do you filter out only visible light? How do you process a video stream in real time? These sorts of questions never even remotely come up in, say, your standard research paper. And in fact, they were problems of a scope I had never even considered considering before, let alone tackling in the semester. And now I'm go, oh, sorry. And now I'm going to hand it over to Lauren Warner, who's going to talk about construction, prototyping, and thinking on the fly when something goes terribly wrong.
So with this project, one of the best things that I loved about this class and a lot of other, other classes that we take at Gov School is you really learn about STEM. You learn about engineering. You learn about this process of, you have this idea and you have this budget and you have to somehow create something out of that. And through this program, it really does a great job of teaching people how to cooperate with others, how to do that kind of group work to create a project and work towards this common goal. And one of the things we really learned with this project is that failure is an option. And through this, sometimes you just have to learn from your mistakes, and you have to take what you have and do the best with, what, the best that you can out of it. So through the Gov School, we're really kind of learning a lot about engineering and preparing for futures in STEM. Thank you.
One, one second. Ms. Williams?
I'm sorry. I'm just over here excited, jumping out of my seat. And I did request for you to come, so thank you very much. One thing I would like for you to share with the public while we have you here is if you could just maybe give a 30-second synopsis of what you actually created, because they heard a lot about the process, and maybe they'll be excited like I am.
Are you going to tell them? Sure. Okay, so brief 30 seconds. What we have, we have a regular webcam here that we modified with a cold mirror to see in the infrared and near-infrared spectrum. This transfers images to our Raspberry Pi processing unit, which will process the images, and they will be displayed on the LCD screen inside the mask here. This will be reflected on the inside of the mask so that the firefighters see this processed image. And what they will see is green representing human temperatures, and then white representing a range of fire temperatures that will change based on the type of fire they are in.
That's pretty cool. All right, our next group speakers are Ardine, Said, and Yamin.
Hello, my name is Said Sekhrib. I'm from Forest Park and a senior at Governor's School.
My name is Amon Stresta. I'm from Potomac Senior High School and I'm also a senior at Governor's School.
My name is Ardine Kim, and I'm from Osmond Park High School, and I'm a senior. And we're going to be talking a bit about Governor's School. One main aspect of Governor's School that I believe is truly beneficial and unique in comparison to any program in the community is its community and the environment for its, presented to its students. Although we come from different schools and diverse backgrounds, Governor's School creates an environment where we're able to unite due to our common passion and field of STEM. Furthermore, by placing a strong emphasis in collaboration and innovative thinking, Governor's School has allowed students like me to experience rigorous and challenging courses which will be almost impossible to find in my base school. I believe by creating such an environment and community for us, Governor's School has allowed students like me to not only dream of achieving great things, but actually take action in achieving our dreams and ambitions. Thanks to Governor's School at Innovation Park and Prince William County Schools, students have the opportunity to invest their time into researching what they are most interested in. Students from all science fans, science strands are given a chance to create and work on their own research projects that can better help them understand the unknowns of science. I, for one, did not know anything about computer programming or robotics prior to Governor's School. However, specialized classes such as mentorship and innovation further supported my understanding and interest in these topics.
Often at base school, we're taught about the theories and concepts of what we learn, but never shown how we can apply it. At Governor's School, we learn directly how we can use it in the real world. Some of these can be shown in the current research project that we're working on. Right now, as humans, we're social creatures. We often work together to complete tasks that's too difficult for a single person. This can be used in a technology known as swarm intelligence. We're using swarm intelligence to showcase how multiple robots can be beneficial over a single complex robot.
Therefore, for our senior-year research project, we're testing the efficiency of swarm technology with tasks such as searching and mapping unknown environments. We're analyzing, we're, we're analyzing the efficiency through two different ways. First, by performing various runs with swarm robots, which we're currently building and coding, and also through a simulation, which will allow us to perform multiple runs within a short amount of time. Our project utilizes swarm intelligence in the hopes of improving space exploration. Instead of configuring one robot to venture on explored lands, we could see to have tens, hundreds, or even thousands of small individual robots working together to achieve that goal. To test such a task, we will, we will perform simulations along with a real-life test in order to see if the performance of multiple robots is better than a single robot. If the tests are to be successful, it will prove that the implementation of swarm intelligence will increase the efficiency of scanning on explored lands.
And of course, as Governor's School students, this has really enriched our education environment. So far, I've gotten accepted into Urbana-Champaign, University of Illinois, and UC Berkeley.
I also got accepted to UC Berkeley for their Electrical Engineering and Computer Science Program. I'm still waiting.
Elizabeth?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Elizabeth Humphries, and I'm here tonight to voice my concerns regarding site based management. I've conducted an extensive amount of research regarding site-based management, and I'm now able to understand how it works, how it's supposed to work, and how it's failing to work within our school system. Site-based management is a decentralization of power to the school level because each school knows its own specific needs. I'm not saying that our schools don't know their needs, however, I am saying that they don't always acknowledge these needs nor do they treat them accordingly. Not only does this affect the students' opportunity to receive the world-class education that Prince William, Prince William County promises to give, but it also directly affects the teachers and their ability to effectively run their classrooms. Our budgets are not being allocated to serve the most pertinent needs of the schools, nor are they being spent in the students' or teachers' best interests. Many of the school's budgets, specifically CD Hilton, show that there is $0 allocated for textbooks, additional equipment, repair equipment, additional software and software repair. Not only are these materials that every student's needs, every student needs in order to be able to effectively learn or comprehend a subject to the best of their abilities, but are also vital aspects of the curriculum which educators need in order to be able to effectively and adequately teach. The argument can of course be made that each classroom has what it needs in order to function. And my question to that statement has to be, at what quality are we allowing our classrooms to function? Students are forced every day to sit in classrooms if all subject to the failed implementation of site-based management. CD Hilton was built 26 years ago, yet biology classrooms still have the same microscopes that were brought in when the school was first opened. In fact, a very large portion of the lab equipment in the science department is rarely, if ever, replaced with new equipment. And as a result, teachers then must find, must either find ways to repair or replace the equipment by their own means or be forced to learn to teach without them. In several subject areas, teachers are only given a class set of textbooks, which at times don't even cover the number of students in a given class, and while some classrooms don't even have textbooks. It's not that our schools don't have the money to purchase the items that are needed, but rather they don't feel obligated to. Due to, due to teachers' inability to provide the students with adequate and much-needed materials, students are falling behind and teachers are struggling to find ways to help them. The academic aspects of our school systems are falling behind, and something has to be done to stop it, or the students will continue to fail and teachers will continue to be able to help them succeed. Site-based management is not being implemented correctly in Prince William County. It works well on paper, but without adequate oversight, certain aspects fail to work and cause a multitude of negative effects across the board. If Prince William County wishes to live up to their promise of providing a world-class education, more, more direct oversight needs to be given to the allocation of funds within each school. Because after being in this educational system for 13 years, I can't say that I've received a world-class education, but rather one subpart to that which I expect from such a school system. Your expectations of your students and your educators are ever rising while your funds are ever dwindling. And because of this, the esprit de corps and morale of the students and the teachers in Prince William County are continuing to diminish day by day. The educators with whom I've spoken have expressed immediate concerns with regards to the way the school system is choosing to run itself, however, they choose to stay silent for fear of retaliation. However, I refuse to be forced into that same silence. Although my teachers may work for the school system, the students don't. The school system works for the students.
Our next speaker is Jamil Scott. Jamil?
My name is Jamil Scott, and, and I'm honored today to come here and to support the naming of the, of a school after John Harper. And my rationale for that is because of his support for me and the things that he's done in his community. He's been active in Prince William County for over 30 years, and his work ethic has never been dwindled. Several, about three years ago, I had an opportunity to teach a class in Prince William, and it was on a Sunday around nine o'clock in the morning. And I knew that was kind of early for him after, before, actually it was Saturday, sorry, before church, right? So it's Saturday at like nine, nine o'clock in the morning, I'm teaching a class. He had a busy schedule all week, and I asked him, I said, can you come by, please, and support me as I teach this class? He said, I have a lot of things on my plate, but I'll make it out. I asked him about three weeks in advance, he still came. I appreciate that. And that example presents the diligence and the, the integrity that the man has. If he says he's going to do something, he's going to do it. And that's the same way that he's helped students out, that's the same way how he's mentored, that's the same way how he's worked with many young people throughout the county. And for this reason, I think that a school named after him will inspire others, other students to come in and to work hard, to aim high, to do great things, and to be civically engaged as he has. Additionally, he has been a trailblazer. If you look at, on the city council and the school board, he has been the first African-American man on that county, ex-first African-American, and also in several other capacities throughout the city, throughout the county. Keep him, keep an eye on time. I had an opportunity before coming up here to speak to many of his colleagues, because he served in the military. And three of them said this right here to me, which impressed upon me, which I said that I will share here today. Well, in the military, if you go to battle and you go to whatever, where you're Iraq, Afghanistan, wherever you go, the reality is you may have to be in a foxhole. You're being attacked. So you have to trust the man next to you when you're in that foxhole. Three people said unanimously that I would always trust him in that foxhole. That is the highest honor that you can get from any military man or any military servant. With that being said, I appreciate his work, I appreciate his work ethic, and his inspiration on me, and I recommend him for the naming of the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Our next speaker is DS Grimes.
My name is Derek Grimes, and my address is on file. I assume the DS Grimes is just a lift-off to my email address, but I am that person. No problem, not a problem. I also have a daughter who attends Benton Middle School within the county. I'm here today to recommend and get your support in naming Potomac Shores Elementary School the John Harper Jr. Elementary School. Mr. Harper is a star resident of Prince William County for over 30 years, as you heard already earlier. As you may know, he has been a member of the Prince William County Board, which you're sitting on now, and he's assisted a lot of you and on the board, and have a capacity you may need. He's also served as the Vice Chair Board of Directors for Prince William County Center of Arts. He's received appointments by Governor Mark Warner and Timothy Kane. While serving on the Prince William County Board, Mr. Harper initiated review of revenue and sharing agreement with the school system, as you know, increasing the revenue from 49 to 53% in revenue sharing. Based on this current Prince William County revenues, this equates to over $25 million in additional annual funds for Prince William County Schools. In the late 90s, Mr. Harper enjoyed mentoring elementary schools. So he's dedicated himself to serving students at the elementary school level by being there. He's also initiated midnight basketball recreational activity at the Dale, Dale City Rec Center. So of course, you would know, this would give our teenagers something else to do instead of spending their times doing negative activities within the community. As you see, Mr. Harper has extremely been in touch with our community at the state and the local government levels. He is someone who champions the rights for not just the educational part of our community, but for the community at, at whole. Mr. John Harper has been considered a contrailblazer, excuse me, within Prince William County by setting example of success for service for his family, the country, and the community. Mr. Harper has influenced the educational system for Prince William County and the students by directly being involved at the county and state level, as I stated earlier. He's been a true advocate for the entire community, not just for the school system. And naming a Potomac Shores Elementary School the John Harper Jr. Elementary School and to launch a new community as Prince William County would be a good foundation for that community to start off on. And I would like to offer to you a solution instead of just always coming up with problems, and that is, we can consider renaming the Dumfries Elementary School as the Miss Covetton, you know, Elementary School, which is viable to do. President has been sought earlier with renaming another school, so there wouldn't be any reason why not to consider that. And also, continue on to name the Potomac Shores in the name of Mr. Harper. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Pat House. Pat?
My name is Pat House, and my address is on file with Ms. Urban. I'm here to support and recommend Mr. John Harper Jr. also for the name of the new Potomac Shores Elementary School. Do I need to start over? Okay, I'm supporting Mr. John Harper as the naming for the new Potomac Shores Elementary School. As has been probably stated before, in addition to Mr. Harper being a husband to BJ, a family The members of his beloved fraternity, Alpha Phi Alpha, also consider him their trusted advisor and mentor. He's highly respected, loved, and admired by many Prince William County residents and has been a productive member in our community for over 30 years. On a personal note, I've known Mr. Harper for over 10 years. We are members of the same church, and we're also members of the local NAACP here in Prince William County. He is a veteran and a graduate of Howard University, as well as a retired Lieutenant Colonel from the U.S. Army, having served over 23 years. Also, from the military, he was honored by being a Vietnam veteran. Mr. Harper continues to demonstrate his outstanding service and involvement to our community and to the education of our youth. He has mentored at the Menneville Elementary School, and he diligently, while mentoring there, encouraged our youth to excel and to achieve their academic goals. While serving as the Director of the Dale City Rec Center, Mr. Harper initiated midnight basketball. This was a program that was very successful and gave teenagers and young adults an outlet to avoid unwanted behavior in the community. Mr. Harper is the first African-American in our community to serve on the Board of Directors for the Prince William County Park Authority, the first African-American to serve as Grand Marshal of the Dale City Parade. And Mr. Harper also supports the Ira Dorsey Scholarship Foundation with his fraternity, which awards deserving students scholarships throughout the year. And he's also a supporter of our annual Delta Sigma Theta MLK Youth Oratorical Contest here in Prince William County. I urge you to consider Mr. Harper as the name for the new school. And I also support Derek Grimes in offering that perhaps we could consider naming the Dumfries Elementary School in honor of Mrs. Covington. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Hossp. And as always, Mr. Hossp, your time will begin when you say Okaquan District.
Well, since I want people's votes tonight, I'm going to be very polite and respectful. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Walts, Mrs. McGowan, my name is Bill Hossp, and Mrs. Urban has my contact information. I still vote in Okaquan District. It's a blessing that you have such worthy choices for naming this new school. Then again, it's a curse that you must choose one of them, isn't it? Tonight, I stand with the current Potomac District School Board Member to endorse Betty Covington as the namesake for this new school. Mr. Wilk and I enjoyed a unique opportunity to fully appreciate her service to Prince William County schools. He competed with her in the last election for a seat on this board, and I was senior advisor to his campaign. I didn't talk to any Russians. It's true in athletics, and it's also true in politics, that we learn to admire the accomplishments and abilities of our opponents. This is the basis of good sportsmanship and good government. The very next day after a hotly contested election, there was a school board meeting. Mr. Wilk had a family emergency, so I had the honor of expressing our appreciation, admiration, and affection for Mrs. Covington's 54 years as a teacher, administrator, and school board member. The election had been about policy differences, but that did not diminish our respect for her dedication to this school system. That same night after the election, Betty hugged me and thanked me for our tribute right over there after the meeting. People in Washington could learn from her these days. Mrs. Covington and Mr. Wilk had a smooth transition, and we were mightily impressed with her overriding concern for good school governance. She knows how to stop campaigning and do what's best for children. That's an example all of us can support. Please name this school after Betty Covington. She's got class. Since there's time, let me add that I'm also concerned about that the next budget depends on the Board of Supervisors' recent offer and the supplementary plan to further reduce class sizes. Also, the recent study showed that your current pay scale rewards loyalty at the expense of recruitment. If you keep skipping step increases, you make it harder to hire enough teachers to staff smaller classes. Back-on message, vote for Betty. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Our next speaker is Milt Johns. And Mr. Johns, before your one minute starts here, I'm going to call up the next couple. I think we can get two more speakers in, I believe, kind of eyeballing the clock here. Two more speakers, I'm going to call up Cory Holman and Etta Jane Hall. We'll be able to sneak in two more and go from there. Mr. Johns, don't make me repeat the rules to you, please.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyers. Good evening. Vice Chairman Jesse, Superintendent Dr. Walts, school board members, Mrs. Urban, Mrs. Simpson, distinguished senior staff to my left and my right, friends and citizens. It's very strange to be on this side of the microphone. My name is Milton C. Johns. I'm a resident of the Brentsville District, and my address information is on file with the clerk. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of the naming of the new Potomac Shores Elementary School for my friend and colleague Betty Covington. I have known Betty for over 13 years, and I had the distinct honor of serving with her on the Prince William County School Board for 12 years. And I can say, as personally being a resident of Prince William County for 26 years, that I can't think of a more qualified person to receive the honor. Betty, as you've heard tonight and at the last meeting, served for over 50 years in our school system. Really, she gave her entire adult life, and then some, to our students. Forty years as a teacher, as an administrator, and then 12 years as a school board member. And technically, it went administrator, school board member, administrator, school board member. She had a short term on the school board, and then she came back to serve as a principal and then returned to serve on the board. And I can tell you this, having served with Betty. Every single vote that she cast in 12 years was based on one guiding principle and one alone: What is in the best interest for children? She was never motivated by partisan politics, special interests, personal interests, and it was reflected in the way that she contemplated votes and the way she voted. And sometimes she was on the winning side, and sometimes she was on the losing side, but I know that Betty never doubted that any of her votes cast on the school board were votes in the best interests of children. So I can't think of a more powerful tribute to the school system than the service and sacrifice and dedication of such a talented and loving and really personable, wonderful person than Mrs. Betty Covington. So it's my honor tonight to address you. February is School Board Appreciation Month, so thank you all for your service. And I ask you, please, to take into strong consideration the recommendation of the name for Betty Covington for the new Southern Shores, Potomac Shores Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Cory Holman.
Good evening. My name is Cory Holman. I live in the Okaquan District. I've been a resident in Prince William County for 11 years. My address is on file with Mrs. Urban. I apologize, I did not know that February was National School Board Month. I think that's awesome. Well, yeah, I'm sitting in the back, I couldn't see it.
Your time is now up, Mr. Holman.
Well, I want to congratulate each of you and thank you for your service to our community. First, I want to say that this school board naming process, I think, is awesome. I know that some feel that it's conflicting, but I will tell you that I don't think that it's conflicting, I think it's complementary. And I'll tell you why, and I know some may disagree. But when else do you see 30 to 50 people getting up and singing the praises of someone other than themselves for something that is good? Think about that. How often do you see that? There's nothing wrong with this process. It is complementary, not conflicting. I also want to recognize Mr. Harper, who, last meeting when we talked about him, he was in the hospital, and he is out of the hospital and here today, and I'd like to ask him and his family to stand, if you can. Okay, that's enough, you're taking up my time. I'm just kidding. I'm just, I'm just. You know, I want to share why John has been a trailblazer and why he's been a personal mentor to me. You know, the criteria for naming the school states that consideration will be given to individuals with service to our country, to our communities, and to our school system. And I'd like to start with a brief story of when I was sitting at John's house, and me and a couple of other guys, and we're sitting, having a drink, and we're talking, and we started talking about the military. And I was the only one in the room that had no military experience. And so we chatted about medals, and the Bronze Star came up. And so I asked the dumb question of, well, you know, what's the significance of a Bronze Star? And of course, that got me in a little bit of trouble. And so I did some research so that I wouldn't look stupid the next time I was hanging out with a military buddy's in. And so the Bronze Star is the fourth-highest individual military honor. And John not only has one, but he has two Bronze Stars, which is called the Bronze Medal with an oak leaf cluster. In addition, he also has several other medals: the Meritorious Service Medal with an oak leaf cluster, which also means two, the Vietnamese Cross of Gallantry with the Silver Star. And I think that that certainly satisfies his service to our country with his service to our military. In addition, a service to our community, serving on the Prince William Park Authority, the Center for Arts, the Committee of 100, the Coalition of Human Services, the Virginia War Memorial Foundation. And my time is up, but you've heard me speak before, you know where I stand, and you know its credentials. I encourage you to name this school the John Harper Jr. Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. And our final speaker in this portion will be Etta Jane Hall.
Can you hear me now? I am Etta Jane Hall, and I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. I retired as the Supervisor of Elementary Counseling Related Services for Prince William County in 2007, after 28 years in the county. Mrs. Covington selected me as Kilby's first Elementary Counselor in 1988, and we worked closely for eight years. During that time, I came to know and appreciate what a dedicated and outstanding person she is and how she has made the lives of many students, teachers, and parents better because of her involvement in their lives. School naming criteria states that selection preference shall be given to those individuals who have made significant contributions to the field of education, especially within Prince William County. Mrs. Betty Covington has served Prince William for 54 years, beginning as a teacher at Dumfries. Dr. Herb Saunders recognized her leadership ability and encouraged her to get her master's in administration at UVA. She served as Assistant Principal at Dale City Elementary, Principal at Kilby for almost 20 years, and later as Principal at Dumfries. She was an elected school board member representing the Potomac District for several terms. I cannot think of anyone who can match her record for making significant contributions to the field of education within Prince William County. I would like to share just a few examples to illustrate this. Mrs. Covington identified potential leadership ability in her teachers, providing them with opportunities to develop their skills and encouraging them to take opportunities to move ahead, even though she hated to lose them as a classroom teacher. She believed that by sharing and expanding their influence, more students would benefit. She knew her students and families and worked with them to improve learning experiences. She cared about the physical and emotional needs of students as well as their educational needs. Each morning, there were students who came by the front hall where she stood to get their hug for the day. They respected and loved her. She was an excellent money manager at Kilby, and at Kilby, flexible funds were used to implement after-school tutoring, full-day kindergarten, and maintain small primary classes in order to improve student learning. Excellent test scores were the result. When she became aware of family needs, she helped families to get the support needed so that electricity was turned on, warm clothes provided, and other services that would enable students to have their needs met. I don't have time to read my last story, but I hope that you will read it, because it's a good example of what she did that very few people know that she did on her own time and with her own money. I think, again, I would recommend that you read your standards for the school naming, and I think Mrs. Betty Covington meets that standard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've already done item 16.01, just to remind everybody, so that takes us on to item 17.01, which is the fiscal year 2017 second quarter budget review. Mr. Klein.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Walts, Mr. John Wallingford, Director of Financial Services, will provide a presentation on the second quarter budget review.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Chairman Sawyers, members of the Board, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, I'm here to provide you with a brief budget review as of the end of the second quarter of fiscal 2017. This review is a result of taking a look at the actual financial activity that's taken place through the end of December and using that activity to forecast our expectations for the financial results at the end of the fiscal year. So, first slide here, you can see available funds. The general reserve and holdback allocation are both, at this point of the year, at zero. Those have been drawn down fully to help meet the needs of additional enrollments that took place, those additional 704 students, and to help fund increases in special ed classes that have also taken place over that period. The next number you see here is slippage in compensation, that's about $14.1 million. Those are savings that we expect to realize in savings from salary and benefits. The next two numbers you see are bus fuel and utility savings, those are both just under $1 million. The next couple of numbers are interesting. We see an actual, expect an actual increase in enrollments, or, excuse me, increase in revenue from the state as a function of those 700 students over our forecast for the year. The next number, 2% compensation supplement, was an item that the General Assembly provided to us as we built the budget for fiscal 17. Those funds were contingent upon their revenue streams, and because their revenues were under what they expected, those revenues to the county have been reduced by $3.7 million. And finally, the last item you see here is the fiscal 16, additional fiscal 16 county revenue. As a result of the audit every year, the auditors determine what actual revenues were. We compare that to what our budgeted revenues were, and that net, whether it's an increase or decrease, that net is applied to the county split 57-43, just like the revenue share. And so you see 20, we have about $20.3 million available to us based on activity through the end of this second quarter. The next slide is projected use of funds, and you can see at the top, that $20.3 million I just mentioned. The first item you see is use of fiscal 2018 beginning balance. That's $17.3 million is funding that will be used to support the fiscal 2018 budget. The next item, contribution to county fund balance, these are funds that we would expect to have to provide back to the county as a result of their fund balance policy. This is our best estimate. These numbers sometimes change, but right now, we're expecting just shy of $2 million. The third item you've seen every year for several years now is a $333,000 contribution to a reserve to replace the 800 megahertz system when it becomes old. And I think we have three or four years in that reserve at this point. And the last item you see here is $69,000 used to increase gifted identification testing. There's actually going to be a shift going from one year to the next, from one grade level to another grade level, and so there's a one-time cost of just over $69,000 for that item. And you can see that leaves an ending balance of $570,000, and it would be our recommendation to hold on to these funds for flexibility, either in the current fiscal year or as we move into the fiscal 18 budget deliberations. in the current fiscal year or as we move into the fiscal 18 budget deliberations. Funding outlook and expense outlook through the rest of the year that would have impact on these numbers. Sales tax revenues, you hear this every year, we talk about this. Sales tax is one of those items from the state that we pay attention to because it does time-to-time change from what our expectations are. Right now, we expect those to come in about where we budgeted. County revenue, same thing. County revenues are up and down relative to forecasts. I keep close communications with the county staff. We're expecting revenues will come in at budget. And as we go into the third and fourth quarters, we'll pay attention to those numbers and report back if we expect any changes there. And finally, expenses, those expenses that we look at when we make these presentations to you. Salary and benefits, we expect through the rest of the year, that number, that $14.1 million, we expect that to remain stable throughout the rest of the fiscal year. And finally, another place that we look at for flexibility in our budgets is through utilities. And a warm winter or a very cold winter can have big swings on those numbers. You saw on the first slide that we're looking at expected savings in the range of $1 million, and we will pay close attention. It's been relatively warm this winter, so we'll see how that works out. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's the first time it's ever gotten an applause. That's wonderful.
That doesn't generally happen for me now.
Yay, second quarter budget reports. Any questions? Mr. Deutsch, then Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First question is just an informational question. What's the county fund balance and why are we giving the money?
I'm sorry, what is the county fund balance?
The county fund balance that apparently we're giving money to?
I'm sorry, I still can't hear you.
What is the county fund balance? On slide three, it says we're giving money to.
Oh, the county fund balance. Contribution to county fund balance?
Yes.
Okay, as part of the policies, the financial policies that the county has, there is a fund balance that's maintained as a percentage of total revenues. Total revenues to the county change every year, and sometimes that county fund balance, that contribution to that county fund balance, has to increase. We've actually had one or two years where that fund balance that the county maintains on their books was over what that revenue expectation is. And so we've actually seen money come back to us. So it goes back and forth. Sometimes we have to contribute money to it, and sometimes we actually receive money back from that. That fund balance policy is actually 10% of total revenues. Seven and a half, I'm sorry, 7.5% of total revenues. So as they determine what the total revenues for the year are, then they determine what that fund balance needs to be. And that's when that contribution takes place.
Is that essentially a rainy day fund, or?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess the part of what, so why are they giving us a whole lot of money and we're giving them some money back essentially to reimburse for it?
Like I said, as we move from year to year, okay, that revenue amount that the county realizes changes. And as a function of that revenue amount, that fund balance policy that they have on their books, that fund balance policy requires that number to either increase or decrease.
Right, I get why their number would change, but if they're giving us a whole lot of money, why are we paying money into the county fund balance?
It's a cooperative agreement between us and Prince William County, so we maintain that balance. And if it needs to go up, we contribute 57% of that need. And if that balance goes down, they return 57% back to us.
The other question on slide two. Slippage is sitting at $14 million. I thought during the last budget cycle, we did some stuff to tighten up what that slippage number was going to end up being by the end of the year. Why is slippage this high come the end of the year?
I think essentially, we're seeing it coming in a couple of different areas. The most significant that I think we're seeing this year is that we've actually seen, and I don't have the exact number, but a significantly higher vacancy rate during the course of the year. So really, the two most, we did, as you say, look at reducing those numbers. My expectation, the number would be lower than this. I think in the context of we're seeing increasing needs in the sense of hiring and having, becoming more difficult to hire, so in some cases, we're hiring later, which has an impact on what our saving, increases our savings. The other one is, as we've gone through the course of the year, we've seen a significantly higher rate of vacancy this year than we had in prior year. And we just have to watch and see how that trend keeps changing. The net effect is both of those have helped drive that number up. We've looked at that as well as we go into the 18 budget to say, let's look at what's happening within salaries, benefits, et cetera, because that rolls up a number of different categories and see if we can't adjust them again to try and bring that to a lower number.
Now, I don't remember what the number was during the last budget cycle. We thought there was a significant chunk of money we could pull out of slippage to fund some different positions.
We did last year.
Yeah, and maybe it was, off the top of my head, maybe it was in like $6 to $9 million range. Is that fairish?
I'd have to go back and look. We could provide that when we talk at work session.
But somewhere, maybe it was five. It was a few million. So then we're saying that that on top of the 14 mil is how far back we are slippage-wise?
Well, the total slippage in compensation at this point is still about 1.5% of total compensation. Yes, it's a big number because $14 million is a lot of money. As a function of total compensation, it's about 1.5%.
Okay, but then it's still, it's still much higher than we were even projecting last year.
It's higher, and what we, as I say, the reason we look at that at this point is it seems we've had higher vacancy rates. A good example is if we have, if our vacancies for the year have 10 teachers more than expected, and that occurs over the course of a year, that's basically $1 million. So it doesn't necessarily take a lot to drive that number.
Is there a reason for the higher vacancy rates that we can identify, or it's just happened?
I think that's, I think I'd probably have to ask HR a little more in detail, but I think a portion of that is a function of what's happening in the national economy and what's happening with teachers and staffing in our area and nationally. It's harder, it is increasingly more difficult to get staff, and particularly when you are looking at the hard-to-staff areas. As a result, it may be harder to have staff come in, get them started. When there are vacancies, it typically increases the time it may take in order to fill those vacancies.
Ms. Ralston. Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a wish, a wish. So the next time that you meet, because the county has a flat tax and we're going into possibly the second year, that's less funding that we have. What would be difficult in a 0.1% tax increase? And if that were possible, just possible, what, how would that help us?
My recommendation this evening is we can take that as a budget question and bring it back to the board at the work session.
That's perfectly wonderful.
Relative to what you're talking about of potentially what the projected revenues are in the budget process and what the impact, I believe, you're probably talking about a one-cent tax rate, not a 0.1%. And we'll take that as a budget question and bring it back to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Jesse.
The slippage in compensation. Am I correct that this has to do with personnel coming and leaving or not being able to fill vacancies?
There are multiple components in which we derive as slippage and what you've described certainly as a part of that. The factors we look at, at this point in time, for example, we're looking now and trying to forecast what our compensation costs will be all of next year. We're doing it. At this point in time, several things drive what those costs will be or what those savings will be. A portion of that is, for example, the number of people that retire between now and the end of the year and the cost and associated compensation for the people that are hired to replace them. Depending on where, depending on those two numbers will change year to year and may increase or decrease your costs. When we're out in the employment process and look to hire people, the longer it takes through that process to hire them, in a sense, we're budgeting for a position, the longer it takes to get to the point of hiring, the higher that savings would be. To the extent that there are more vacancies out there in a given time period, again, that would also increase what our savings would be.
I guess my second question is, the slippage compensation, is it transferable? For example, when your budget cycle, September 30th is your cutoff date, and then suddenly you get a number of kids and therefore your budget needs are greater. And let's say, School A has a budgeting problem. Is, with that, the additional money in slippage, would you be able to transfer that to assist schools that have budget difficulties?
Normally, we would not do that simply because at that point in time, it is very difficult to compute what that number is going to be. However, that's where we reflect the numbers relative to the general reserve and the holdback allocation. The holdback is one that we set aside to allow for growth in enrollment. And in the context of this year of additional students, the net effect is we drew down the holdback allocation completely, which, as I recall, was budgeted at about $1 million. We drew down the general reserve, which was budgeted at about, almost $6 million. So we saw some substantially higher cost increases. In this case, we've used those assets that we had budgeted for the general reserve and the holdback to cover it. At the point at which we're looking at compensation in those total costs, really, the end of the second quarter is the first time we get a real good picture of what we expect to have in compensation. Partly because if, for example, this year where we're hiring additional staff, then that in turn, by the time they come in, take, get in the positions, incur expenses, and we begin to project on it, it takes us into really the end of October, end of November, before we can get a good handle on what that number is going to be.
The other question I have on school budgets. If there is an overage or under spending, are schools still allowed to carry over that money into the next school year? Or if they're under budget, does it come out of their allocation, the next year's allocation?
The current policy, if you will, is that the schools could carry over an amount equal to 1% of their budget from one year to the next, with the idea that it helps facilitate and smooth some of the budget processes from one year to the next. And particularly if they have something like a significant piece of equipment or particularly large textbook order or something like that, it helps them manage their budgets, not just in a single year, but within limitations across multiple years. We also, as you've mentioned, if a school is at a point at which, and it is a controlled process, were they to incur a deficit at the end of the year, we also carry that deficit over to them in the following year and expect them to make it up in their following year's budget.
Okay. And my final question has to do with the fuel and projected utility savings. Is that weather-related?
Well, there's really two portions to that. Weather is one of those factors. We certainly have already seen significantly warmer weather in December and January. The other component, particularly in fuel oil, as you've remembered, this time last year, we've seen a very volatile fuel oil market over the past year. We looked at budgeting, and we talked to the board last year, at about $50 a barrel range. During the year, we went as low as about $25 or $26 dollars a barrel. At this point, the market is about $53 a barrel. So we've seen some improvements in savings there. And in this particular case, it's likely where we're budgeting. We're seeing savings in this year, but it won't generate any savings next year because the cost of oil has come back up. But we're trying to conservatively estimate what the cost would be in a market that has been fairly volatile.
I'm sorry, I have one other question. The energy savings, maybe I'm confused about this, but I remember every year, we've had this big energy savings, and we have this ceremonial type of, is that a part of this? Or are we anticipating, I think we had $4 million, am I correct, in energy savings?
There are, this would, this effectively, it'd be a little more complicated, but yes, this effectively is also a representation of, as we implement additional energy savings, those energy savings would show up as either fuel or utility savings as a function of our projection in a current year. So yes, that is a piece of it. Normally, what we've tried to do in the budget process is, as we have recognized those additional savings, particularly from the energy program, in the budget process, then we've taken money out of the amount that we need to budget, used it to fund other things in the budget as we've gone into the next fiscal year. I don't remember the exact number, but for a course of about three years there, I believe, our actual utility costs have gone down even as we added buildings, and, you know, the school division has been growing.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question in regards to slippage in the sense that, I understand that we don't have a crystal ball, and there's no magic answer that you can come up with every year exactly to predict what the dollar figure will be. I'm wondering, do we, when we look at slippage, do we factor in things like trend data? Like, is there, has anyone from your staff looked at, maybe if an election year plays into the amount of teacher turnover or moves that we have, or those kind of things to try to help forecast as we look into the future, an idea as to whether the number is going to be higher or lower? I mean, I know that, like, now we have four generations in the workforce, the oldest one being the predominant one retiring, millennials being people who stay in place longer, and I didn't know if any of those things are looked at trend-wise when we do our budget.
Not so much necessarily as relative to, say, an election year. I think one of the components that probably does impact it is, in years in which, and again, we've had it this year, in years in which we see an increase in enrollment costs and an increase, I'm sorry, an increase in enrollment, and we actually go out and hire more people, the fact that we are hiring more people effectively, because they come in typically lower on the salary scale, they will lower our average salary from what we have budgeted, and we will generate additional savings in that year. Then we reset the average salary again each year as we go forward. To the extent that we have, for example, a number of years back, 2009, 2010, I think, where we saw, you know, economic conditions were tight and people were not retiring, we had slowed turnover because people were staying because they wanted to stay in their jobs. In that particular circumstance, in fact, our savings were less because we didn't have as much turnover as the norm.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I know, because of where we live, I was just wondering, we're so tied to federal government and jobs and things like that, and when there's an administration changeover, usually our area kind of mirrors that as well. So I was just curious to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? Ms. Sadori.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Klein, I have a question about the second page with projected use of funds. I just want to clarify, when we look at the projected use, are we looking at spending those items? For example, the 800-megahertz reserve contribution, gifted identification testing, are those things that we would spend on at the end of the year, at the end of the fourth quarter? Are those spending items that would go forward right now?
No, the, from the items up there, again, the FY18 would be funds carried over to support the beginning balance in the FY18 budget, which we presented at the last meeting. Keeping in mind that within that $17 million, if you recall, as a part of the budget, we identified one-time funding associated with additional funding for the student, to purchase the student management system replacement, and one-time monies associated with the equipment associated with bandwidth. So in the sense of taking one-time beginning balance monies, we're carrying it over and associating that primarily with one-time expenses. We've already touched on county fund balance. The 800-megahertz reserve is not, is simply putting money in the bank for concerns that were raised four or five years ago to ensure that roughly every 10 years, we have a major replacement cycle for our 800-megahertz radio system. This basically puts money in the bank so that when we hit the 10th year, there's money in the bank to help pay for that transition. That was an item four or five years ago that the board of supervisors raised with us, and they were rather insistent that we start contributing to that. So of the items up there, the gifted identification testing would effectively be an expenditure that occurs, that we would expect to incur within this year, and we would be asking the board to approve that at the point in time that we come back to do the approval of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Ms. Sadori. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to, let the PowerPoint come down there. Moving on to item 17.02, which is the school naming of the Potomac Shores Elementary School. Before we get into the motion here, I just kind of want to give everyone a little bit of a background on, excuse me, the naming committee, on how it works. So by policy, the naming committee is made up of the chairman, the member at which the school, where the school physically sits, which in this case- the school, where the school physically sits, which in this case is the Potomac District, represented by Mr. Wilk. And then after the boundaries are decided, any board member who the school's boundaries go into their magisterial district as well. So in this instance, it was only one other member, which was Ms. Williams, so officially, which is the Woodbridge District. So officially, the committee was made up of myself, Mr. Wilk, and Ms. Williams, just so everybody knows, and that's, and that's per policy. I wasn't able to make the one town hall, or not the one, the one meeting that, that everyone had. My son had had an accident, so I had, I had to stick around home that day. But I did get a lot of feedback from both sides, and understand it was a very cordial experience. Everyone spoke highly of, of the person. There were some other names as well, but it became very clear that, that Mr. Harper and Ms. Covington were the two names that were, that were primarily coming out of the committee. To get some feedback from the other board members, and also plenty of members of the community, I originally took a straw poll of, of where the, the committee member stood on the vote. I just want everyone to know that, that original vote was, was Ms. Williams and I in favor of Mr. Harper, and Mr. Wilk in favor of Ms. Covington receiving the name of the school. This has been an ongoing process. That was a week or so ago. This has been an ongoing process, lots of conversations. And so with that, and the, I just want to let everyone know what the committee ultimately recommends, is that after many discussions with the community, Mr. Harper, Ms. Covington, everyone else that has been involved, the committee is going to unanimously recommend the hyphenated name of Covington Harper Elementary School for this school. So I just want to let everyone know, that's what the committee's recommendation is. (APPLAUSE). I just want to be perfectly clear with everybody, I just want to be perfectly clear with everybody, the recommendation is just a recommendation. So that, that, I just want to make sure everyone's perfectly clear on that, that I didn't do anything by decree, I promise, and if I did, I, I promise you, you would read about it. But I just want everyone, let everyone know, that is, that is the, the committee's recommendation. And as I have done in the past, and will continue to do, I will throw the motion to the local member at where the school physically sits. So, Mr. Wilk.
It is the committee's recommendation that the school in the Potomac Shores Elementary be named Covington Harper Elementary.
Do you have another form of a motion, Mr. Wilk?
I move that, based off the committee's recommendation, that the school in the Potomac Shores community be named Covington dash, or hyphen Harper Elementary.
Mr. Chairman?
One second, just to make sure I get the motion right. It was mostly already typed in, that the Prince William County School Board approve...
Covington Harper Elementary School.
That the Prince William County School Board approve the naming committee's naming recommendation for Covington Harper Elementary School. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second.
Ms. Williams, thank you. Discussion, Mr. Wilk, it's your motion.
So, thank you, Mr. Sawyer, for the background information. I do want to mention a couple of things, and just a little, kind of, obviously, you see, he gave the evolution of where we came, and, you know, and I just want to recognize again, thank both, the, both sides, I guess, if we want to say, how this issue has evolved, jumping back a year ago. This has been much more peaceful, community gathering, civil, very collaborative, I think, process. I do want to speak about a couple of things, I want to emphasize about Ms. Covington, and where I came to my decision is, and a lot of things have been said the last couple of months, or, it's been a while now, I feel like it's dominated everything. I, you know, and Ms. Covington Betty has put in over five decades of service, exemplary service to Prince William County, as some have said, as a teacher, a principal, and a school board member. You know, and, and we're talking about, and I know, and, and I definitely recognize Mr. Harper for being a trailblazer in his service for the, for the country, and what he's done in the community. I do want to recognize also that when we talk about trailblazing, Ms. Covington also fits the mold. In a period, in a time period, when many administrative roles in school divisions were filled by males, Ms. Covington was the first female in many roles to serve in her position in the community, including first female principal of a kindergarten facility, first female school board representative of the Potomac District. A couple of other things that, that, you know, I've seen in emails, that I also want to emphasize is, you know, Ms. Covington has served, when, in her time and her distinguished service, she served in areas of high poverty. These were not affluent communities, these were areas. And we talk about poverty, and we, I've seen studies, and it's interesting, a, a Western Michigan professor did a study, I saw, and I talk about this at work, is kids in poverty, when they do a study about this, two out of five kids in poverty at the elementary level already fall off in their belief in what their career path, and what their goals and aspirations are going to be. They don't, they lose that motivation, that engagement, when it comes to looking at that career path and those opportunities for them. And I just want to mention that, you know, the communities that Ms. Covington served, Kilby, Dumfries, Cherry Hill, the Potomac area, you know, she was someone who inspired a lot of those kids, as we've seen with the emails, and the phone calls, and the messages that we've been receiving from many of her former students and parents. So in the area of that, I wanted to talk about that, and, you know, there isn't a part of the Potomac District and the schools that I go to that was not touched by Ms. Covington's 12-plus years of service in the district. When I walked the Potomac High School, the entire renovation and addition, Ms. Covington. When I look at the whole renovation to Dumfries Elementary, Ms. Covington. When I look at the IT program at Grand Park, Ms. Covington. And I learned a lot about Betty, running against her, whether it was very fond conversations I had with people in her memories on the front porch, knocking on doors, some people laughing me off, some people slamming the door at me. But overall, whether they were a supporter of mine or Ms. Covington, I never had a single voter say one negative thing about Betty Covington. It might have been a policy decision, or an idea of change in general, but no one had anything negative to say about her service to the community. And I want that to be recognized as well. Following, I know Mr. Hoss left this, mentioned this, is, you know, right after my election, Ms. Covington reached out to me and offered to be a steward and a guide for me, and a mentor, to help learn the process and the institutional knowledge of the school system. And we've had many dinners, many good discussions, many phone calls, and it has been an absolute honor, Betty, being your friend, and having the ability to try to support and get this. But governing and leading are not always easy things. Just because I may deem something or wish something is not always what may be in the best interest of the community. And the community has spoken, and as a part of bringing the people together, that's where we're at right now, and I just wanted to give a little background to that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can mirror Justin's statements on Ms. Covington. After serving with her on a board, and meeting her and spending time with her personally, I have much respect for Ms. Covington. She actually was instrumental into mentoring me in my seat on the school board, and would have been completely lost without her and Ms. Jessie for welcoming committee. For me, I started this process as listening to the public hearing, and the accomplishments of, of all the names that were submitted, as well as, I think there was a geographical name submitted in addition to individuals. I admire Mr. Harper tremendously. He was instrumental in mentoring me, and when I began my race for school board, probably not everyone knows, but I never ran for anything prior to running for school board. So it was a great honor to me to be able to speak to someone who had set a, a path in our community that I could follow. I am thankful to him for his work on the revenue sharing agreement, which we are so, since it's budget season, I'll say blessed to have, without having to have further discussion with the board of county supervisors about our funding needs. I think it has served our community well, and will continue to serve us for years to come. I feel that this naming process was the most collaborative process that I have been a part of since sitting on the board. It was extremely wonderful to hear everyone come out with such high remarks for everyone who was, for all the names nominated. And I really feel like that is the process that it should be when we choose to name something or do something in the community that involves all of us. We may not all agree on the outcome, or which side of the aisle we stand on, but it's nice to be able to agree to disagree with such common respect for each other. So I am thankful to be a part of this process, and I'm excited to find out the outcome with this vote, and I just thank you for allowing me to be a part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Jessie.
I've had the pleasure of knowing both of these people, and each one has contributed much to my career. You know, the first person that I met was Betty, and Betty, Betty was here from Dale City, and worked with Fannie Fitzgerald and various people. When I was principal at Vaughn, and the school board member that represented my district did not, because he was working, did not come to my school, everyone would say, well, Betty's going to come, Ms. Covington's going to come, right? And she always came. When I came on the board, I was very naive about how votes took place, and was kind of shocked that, that I was not voted in initially. And Betty didn't, Betty and I don't always agree, but we've always been agreeable. She, she voted at, at that time with that group, and then she turned around, and she was the person that I went to. She took me in, because I, I, you know, I know when I don't know. I knew a lot about being a principal, had been a principal for 20 years, and really had a great time. But it was Betty Covington who talked to me, and she trained me, and she trained both of us. And I remember Mr. John said, fine. I said, we need, because I came in pretty much dependent on her, and I wanted to make sure Lori came in with additional support. When we did the George Hampton deal, we made these compromises, and tonight I see the same thing happening. And I think the people who really will determine whether or not this is going to be Harper, Covington, or Covington Harper, has to be Ms. Covington and Mr. Harper. And so I'm going to ask, in the same way I did with Mr. Hampton, what his feelings and views were prior to the vote. I would like to know if the, Mr. Harper and Mrs. Covington, because they are friends, have had an opportunity to discuss any thoughts that they have.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Deutsch.
The motion on the table is Covington Harper, so we would actually have to have a different motion to change what it is, but that's the motion.
Correct, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to...
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. But I do think that these two people are friends, and they will agree to support the school division. And I also want to say that, I think that this is historic, the combination of names, but it's not the first time in Prince William County. Our first school was Washington Reed, and it was the, it was the, the African-American school was the first one on this end of the county, was Washington Reed. The first one on the western end of the county was Antioch McCray. Washington Reed was named after Gwen Wash, Gwen Washington's great-grandmother, I think she said, was the Reed person. And then we have Garfield, with Garber, the Garbers, who are still on this, have property here, and also the Manafils. And that's why I realize that there's a Gar and a capital F for Fields. I think that two people who work together and have been friends together, I, I just think that that is perhaps, for me, the most positive thing that could come out of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I'll just take a brief minute here. I just think it'd be worthwhile to let everyone know, obviously, I will, I will support the, the name as is, but I'm going to take a minute, if you don't mind, I would like to introduce them, since they're both in the room, I saw them today. Mrs. Betty Covington, would you please stand for the crowd? And Mr. John Harper. I'd just briefly like to add, like, what I mentioned, talking about the naming committee, is that this process was, was, I don't want to call it different, but I, I noticed, I did notice a difference in the, in the fact that, that everyone seemed to be, coming to me saying everything was very cordial, everything was very polite, that, that, that both of them are, are very deserving, and that's certainly my position as well. So I, I'm happy to support the motion. Is there anyone else? Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speaking of the motion. School namings are, are an interesting thing, and they, they sure become an interesting topic on, on this board. I was introduced to them, as far as the Prince William County School Division goes, during the 2015 election, where I had people approach me about coming out and supporting, naming the high school for Senator Colgan. And I have a world of respect for Senator Colgan, and I have always admired him as long as I have been involved and following Virginia politics. However, what I told the people at the time was that it's really not my place to be involved in it, and the people who are going to the high school should be able to have a say and be able to decide. So I, you know, I, I believe that we should be listening to their voices. That was what I told people as we started last year. And last year, we had a, shall we say, memorable school naming process. What was, what was sad to me last year, though, was the way in which half this board decided that listening to the voices of the people boundaried for a school was unimportant. We saw, we saw the voices really of those people drowned out, as there were efforts to bring in people from around the county, bring in people from around the state, bring in people from around the country, to try to have a vote for a particular person. And it, it really devolved into a very unnecessarily bitter process, as, as really the, the decision was made that, you know, we can, we can tell overwhelmingly who, who the people from a locality support, but that's not important. Come to find out, that wasn't the first time that that had happened, because all through that process, we had references to the way that certain other board members in the past were portrayed as racist, because they wouldn't go along with naming a particular school in the past for a particular person who some people deemed needed to, but who had no ties to that locality. And this, this concept that a couple of people have the right to name any school they want, and really override and ignore the will of the people boundaried and living by that community school, is really very disruptive to this county, and to the way that we go about business. And it unnecessarily sows strife. And that's why, at that time, you know, I said that for the good of the county, we need to stop naming schools after people who are still alive, because we apparently, as a board, can't respect listening to the people who are actually impacted by the votes that we take. And I think that, you know, we, we revisited our school naming policies, we made it clear that we were going to give weight to people who are, have had significant impacts in But we, we really do have to get back to listening to the people who are impacted by the school namings, by the communities that we just vote to boundary. And I, I think it's, you know, echoing what Mr. Mr. Wilk said, I mean, I think it's very clear that the people in the Potomac District overwhelmingly appreciate and admire and respect Mrs. Covington for her... respect Mrs. Covington for her five decades of service to that community. And I think for a lot of us, that's really hard to comprehend, the years and the ongoing sacrifice that was for the education of people right there. And this school is being built right next to the school that she actually volunteered to leave the school board to go teach at a school. And that's, that's really pretty incredible. But I, you know, what, what the actual community that we're voting on a school for desires is really clear. If you listen to emails, you listen to people who've shown up, it, it's pretty obvious. So I, I think that as a board, we have to stop naming things for people who are still alive, so we can get away from really the politicization and the division that's being caused by the way these school namings are going about. And I stated it then, and for that reason, I will not be voting in support of this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Betty and John. I'm so new to the board, it's only been a year, but I will tell you that when I won, I talked to Betty. And she said, oh Diane, come over, let's go to lunch and I'll help you. And I knew that she meant what she said, because she's called me several times and I'm, now I'm into my second year. But what she didn't realize is that when we would talk on the phone, I was taking in everything she was saying. One of the things she said, oh, don't, don't ever worry about things, as long as you do it for the children. So I took that to heart. I met John years ago, a few years and years back, and he was always sweet and kind and courteous, and yes, he has a stellar, a very stellar life he's lived. And I am so pleased. So when these two names came up, well, first, we knew we were going to have a naming. And the first thing I wanted to do, because just coming off of Hampton, I wanted to find a hole. It could be a rabbit hole, but I, I was trying to find a hole to dig myself into. And I was gonna cover myself up with that dirt. But then I realized who the two people were. And I thought, they are probably two of the nicest individuals that you can think of if you're going to be in this kind of situation. So I am so glad if, since they are willing to accept this. I just think that it is the most wonderful thing to have people who are not so self-centered and so selfish that they're willing to share. For that, Betty, I thank you, and John, I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. With that, I will call the vote. Those in favor of the motion that the Prince William County School Board approved the naming committee's recommendation for Covington, Harper Elementary School, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Deutsch, motion passed.
If they'd be so inclined, I would like to welcome Ms. Betty Covington and Mr. John Harper up to the front of the desk to take a photograph with the board. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mrs. Betty Covington and Mr. John Harper.
Oh, hey, we want peace. Enough turmoil in the country. But I will say thank you, thank you to all of you. And John and I have been friends for a long time, so I'm glad that we didn't have a lot of bickering and turmoil and disagreements and people bashing me, people bashing him and whatever. So thank you so much to everybody. Thank you, board members. I know, I, I sat there 13 and a half years, actually, so I know what you all are dealing with. Thank you for your service. It's a tough job, but your hearts are there for the children too, or you wouldn't be there. Thank you.
Like I said, it is an honor for me to be here this evening alongside my friend Betty Covington. It's sort of historic in the sense that I don't know of any public building in Prince William County that has on its surface a black man and a white woman. Now, when you look back upon, you know, not so many years ago, it was taboo for a black man and white woman to be married, to be together. See, our times have changed. And also, this happens to be the month of Black History Month. And so this is very apropos, I believe, and Betty, I'd like to say you're a darling and I, we would be friends forever.
A darling, wow.
We not only did something great, we did something historic. Times two. Please come over here so we can take a picture.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I don't know why I have to go. I think I want to talk to her. I'm so excited. Okay. I'm glad. We not only did something great, we did something historic. Times two. Please come over here so we can take a picture.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I don't know why I have to go. I think I want to talk to her. I'm so excited. Okay. I'm glad. We not only did something great, we did something historic. Times two. Please come over here so we can take a picture.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I don't know why I have to go. I think I want to talk to her. I'm so excited. Okay. I'm glad. We not only did something great, we did something historic. Times two. Please come over here so we can take a picture.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I don't know why I have to go. I think I want to talk to her. I'm so excited. Okay. I'm glad. We not only did something great, we did something historic. Please come over here so we can take a picture.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I don't know why I have to go. I think I want to talk to her. I'm so excited. Okay. I'm glad. We not only did something great, we did something historic. Times two. Please come over here so we can take a picture.
If I can have everyone's attention, please, we're gonna grab a quick photograph with the board and you're welcome to celebrate out in the atrium, but we do have to continue with the business of the school board after that. So we're gonna grab a quick photograph and move on, okay? Thank you.
Put you guys, squeeze in some more.
Now, Justin was good where he is.
Y'all, 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 y'all turn sideways, y'all, y'all do better. Turn sideways, turn sideways. Turn sideways, turn sideways. Ready? All right, guys, somebody do a count.
All right, say cheese. On three, one, two, three.
And take pictures.
I'm doing okay. I'm doing okay. Good to see you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Take care.
Hey, don't worry.
Congratulations, Harper.
Congratulations, my brother.
All right, I'm gonna gently remind everybody, if we could please step into the atrium, please to continue the, the conversations and the happiness, it's wonderful.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
I'm heading out, absolutely.
All right, I'm gonna call the room back to order, please.
All right, I'm gonna ask that the, that the room be quiet so we can move on to the superintendent's time. Again, feel free to move into the atrium and, and actually be as loud as you want. Have fun out there. But we need to move on here to the superintendent's time. Dr. Walts.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
Yes? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we allow Dr. Walts to submit his report in writing as opposed to having to give the presentation.
I'm sorry, there's, there's no action, there's, there's nothing, there's no action at this point on, there's no action on the agenda. Dr. Walts has time, this is his time to present, there's no, there's no motions to be made, this is his, by policy, this is his time to present.
Well, we, we could vote to allow him to and then we can move on in all party.
Hold. Thank you very much. Ms. Deutsch, let me understand, what, what's your, what's your point of order, or what are you trying to do?
Oh, because he was asked by the board to give this report on the, give this presentation that we're doing. So we can make a motion just to allow him to give the presentation in writing as opposed to having to actually deliver it.
This, this, actually, this was requested to be done at a board meeting and has been pushed back twice, so this is something that, that has been requested to be done. So it would take unanimous consent and I, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, so, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on. Dr. Walts.
Chairman Sawyers and members of the board, congratulations to Ashley Domeno Jr. at Brentsville District High School on creating the winning flag design for Youth Art Month, which begins March 1st. Her design will be transformed into a three-foot by five-foot flag that will be displayed at the National Art Education Association Convention in New York City in March. It will also be displayed at the Virginia Art Education Association Conference in Reston in November. Nearly 50 works of art by students in 25 of our schools are on exhibit through March 31st at the Buchanan Partners Gallery at the Hilton Performing Arts Center. The exhibit is free and open to the public Tuesday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Our school division has received a distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the 18th year in a row. This is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and represents a significant achievement. Congratulations to Kathleen Addison, Supervisor of Budget, and John Wallingford, Director of Financial Services in the department that is led by Associate Superintendent Dave Klein. The school board is seeking suggestions for the name of the new alternative education school, also known as the Non-Traditional School, under construction at the corner of Joplin and Aiden Roads. Anyone who has a suggestion is invited to a community input session on Monday, February 27th at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium of Colgan High School. Details are on the division website. Our annual food show will be held on March 9th at Colgan High School with two seedings, one at 6:00 p.m., the second at 7:00 p.m., and this is free. Please help us select lunch and breakfast items for our students for next year's menu. You can reserve your seat by calling 703-791-7314. And while we speak of food, our schools and employees are assisting with the annual Spring Food Drive, because food is in short supply in many homes in Prince William County. We are asking everyone who has the means to remember this the next time you shop, please consider buying an extra food item to help our local food pantries. Schools and administrative offices will have collection boxes on site until March 15th in the east and until March 16th in the west. Non-perishable items collected will go to the Axe and Serve Food Pantries. We need items such as cold cereal, canned meats, dry and canned beans, spaghetti sauce, soup, macaroni and cheese, canned fruits and vegetables. We have students who come to school hungry. On behalf of the school division, I thank everyone who is assisting us with this important food drive. We know that students learn and achieve better when they are not hungry. And with the Grammy Awards taking place only a few nights ago, I offer congratulations to Zul Bailey Jr. This world-renowned cellist and Prince William County native, won a Grammy for his solo performance with the Nashville Symphony. Zul attended Vaughn Elementary School, Woodbridge Middle School, and Woodbridge High School, graduating in 1990. He is currently a professor of cello at the University of Texas at El Paso. Our very own school board vice chairman and Okaquan District Member, Mrs. Lily Jesse, who recently was honored by the Afro-American newspapers for her ongoing work and leadership on the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Oratorical Contest. Congratulations, and on behalf of the Prince William County community, thank you for your many years of service and for this outstanding event and your dedicated career to public Now, I will switch gears. As I announced at our last board meeting, it's time for my next report to the school board and the community on the board's identified goals for the superintendent and the school division for the current school year. For the viewing audience, the board established nine overarching goals from within seven standards, and from these goals, 40 indicators of success were identified. As the school board will recall, I presented a comprehensive five-year expedited plan for class size reduction at the November 30th, 2016 school board meeting. This presentation outlined the completed work in three of those 40 indicators from within standard one. Subsequently, the expedited plan to reduce class size was included as a part of my supplement to the 2017-2018 proposed budget at the last meeting. Tonight, I will present at the request of Vice Chairman Lily Jesse, the summary of work that has been completed and the tasks that are in progress to be completed by the established deadline. I will cover three of the nine goals from standards five and seven, and 14 of the 40 indicators. And so here we go. All right, so let's start with some good news. These goals tonight are talking about our specialty programs, career and technical education, dual enrollment, and our current reality in Prince William County is that all of these programs have grown along with the students participating in them. The programs in all high schools are found and also in middle and elementary schools. Awareness of these programs and transportation options have increased and there have been renewed communications. Partnership with Northern Virginia Community College have resulted in more students earning college credit. We have reopened and expanded the welding program. We have grown Project Lead the Way from two schools to 12 high schools. We've grown Middle School Project Lead the Way from five middle schools to all middle schools. We've updated the Health and Medical Sciences Program and aligned it with the Biotechnology Program at Osborne Park High School. 40 indicators from within standard one. Subsequently, the expedited plan to reduce class size was included as a part of my supplement to the 2017-2018 proposed budget at the last meeting. Tonight, I will present at the request of Vice Chairman Lily Jesse the summary of work that has been completed and the tasks that are in progress to be completed by the established deadline. I will cover three of the nine goals from standards five and seven and 14 of the 40 indicators. And so here we go. All right, so let's start with some good news. These goals tonight are talking about our specialty programs, career and technical education, dual enrollment, and our current reality in Prince William County is that all of these programs have grown along with the students participating in them. The programs in all high schools are found and also in middle and elementary schools. Awareness of these programs and transportation options have increased, and there have been renewed communications. Partnership with Northern Virginia Community College have resulted in more students earning college credit. We have reopened and expanded the welding program. We have grown Project Lead the Way from two schools to 12 high schools. We've grown Middle School Project Lead the Way from five middle schools to all middle schools. We've updated the Health and Medical Sciences Program and aligned it with the Biotechnology Program at Osborne Park High School. We've added cybersecurity at Potomac High School. CTE has increased the number of certifications earned by students by 54 percent. Standard five, communication and community relations. The superintendent fosters the success of all students through effective communication with stakeholders. To enhance communication relative to PWCS specialty, dual enrollment, and CTE programs, including the development of a concrete transition plan intended to clarify the availability and details of such programs, to expand marketing efforts with a specific plan for a streamlined process by which staff and board members may provide user-friendly materials to parents and other public and private groups within the school community through technological, video, and multilingual communications. Now, on this slide, those various indicators are all embedded in the goal that I just went through. So let's talk about what's been completed under indicator 25. We've published the new high school course catalog in seven languages for the very first time, reviewed and assessed current programs and their offerings, and we completed the survey satisfaction with current communications. Under indicator 26, we've sent postcards to fifth and eighth graders to promote these offerings. We've scheduled autodiler email information nights. We've held two Division Middle School Information Nights with interpreters. We've held two High School Information Nights with interpreters. And we've held school-based information nights. We've promoted family tours of our special programs, and that is ongoing. So now, let's look at, again, we're continuing with indicators 25 through 27. These are in process and are on schedule for completion by May 2017. Indicator 25, develop new promotion strategies and survey their effectiveness, update the web with new and engaging content, communicate transportation options. For indicator 26, middle school counselors are hosting tours for Rising Feeder Elementary students, and many of these have already started and many have already been held. High school counselors will do the same for middle school students. We've added PSAT 9 to increase early identification for underrepresented high school students who demonstrate readiness. High school coordinator visits to middle schools for school information nights and lunchtime with students, which has, by the way, been very popular for the counselors to go over and talk to the students in the middle schools during lunch. Indicator 27, again, on completion by May of 2017. Advertising at Central Registration and the Parent Resource Center. Creating student-produced infomercials and posts online. Update information publication with translations for both transfer and transportation programs. Increase specialty programs and TV PSAs, which are like little advertisements. Increase awareness and interpreters, and those are available at all of these events. Increase non-English specialty program web content and provide translated and subtitled video clips for Division Information Nights. Now, we move to standard seven, division-wide student academic progress. The superintendent's leadership results in acceptable, measurable, division-wide student academic progress based on established standards. The board has asked for us to continue to expand dual enrollment courses specifically to increase the participation rate, to expand on general education classes for college-bound students, to improve the services provided by counselors relative to these courses, to better integrate and coordinate the dual enrollment program with specialty programs, to explore community partnerships and resources to enhance the opportunities available to students, and to develop an action plan incorporating these goals by December 1st, 2016. At the top of this slide, you will see that broad-based goal broken into its six component parts. So let's talk about what's been completed. With indicator 32, we've included dual enrollment in the counseling directors' meetings, offered parent summit on middle-to-high transition with a focus on the course catalog, dual enrollment options, and specialty programs, and monitor dual enrollment data for participation rates, and that is ongoing. We've completed under indicator 34, to increase and reprioritize funding for new and pilot dual enrollment and CTE programming. And finally, we've completed in indicator 35, the action plan, and that was provided to the school board on November 23rd of 2016. On schedule for completion, again, indicators 30 and 31. Explore whole-school specialty program options and incorporate CTE for the 13th high school. Investigate and prepare a proposal for a central career and technical education center with potential location, costs, and programs. Leverage alternative delivery methods, including web-based instruction with dual enrollment options, use of NVCC staff and facilities to offer HVAC, and you heard from two of those students tonight, use cloud-based software to infuse post-secondary and industry expert instruction for Potomac High School cybersecurity courses, explore adding more dual enrollment courses for both general education and career and technical education, and add criminal justice dual enrollment at Colgan High School fall of 2017. And indicator 32, high school counselor shall share dual enrollment opportunities with students when visiting middle schools, providing counseling course selection best practices checklists with emphasis on dual enrollment, and provide and publicize student course selection checklist with questions and considerations on dual enrollment and specialty programs. Indicator 33, exploring the whole-school specialty option. I've talked about that, the alternative delivery method. Some of these are redundant, but they, again, also answer for what's been requested under indicator 33. Indicator 34, expand business partnerships for new programs such as plumbing to get additional resources and identify grants to assist with startup costs for these new programs. Standard seven, continuing, continuing to expand the CTE programs to increase the variety of certifications and the number of students graduating with these certifications, to increase the staff parental and student awareness, again, of such programs and the transportation options, develop community partnerships, and enhance the opportunities for our students. So... Now, we are on to indicators 36 through 40. So in the broad-based goal from the school board, these are now broken up into indicators 36 through 40. We have completed indicator 37, working with Northern Virginia Community College to align the courses with dual enrollment, ensuring that students secure required industry certifications for graduation, and again, that's ongoing. We've completed an indicator 38. We've scheduled and had the autodiler for information nights. We've held two Division Middle School info nights, two Division High School info nights, both with interpretations, interpretation services. We've aligned the courses with NOVAC, held the information nights at the schools, individual schools, promoted the tours, and had high school coordinator visits to the middle schools. Indicator 39 is completed. Increase and reprioritize funding for new and pilot CTE programs, and we've completed indicator 40, and that's the action plan that I sent to you on November 23rd. So on schedule for completion by May of 2017, indicator 36, explore whole-school specialty programs. Again, that was embedded in one of the other ones. I'm not going to read all of these because several of these we've covered in a different one. I do want to go down to the bottom of 36, third from the bottom. Explore the use of elementary Project Lead the Way at five elementary schools. Add the plumbing program at Garfield. Add criminal justice dual enrollment CTE at Colgan this year. Indicator 37, increase the number of dual enrollment instructors. Identify the number of students graduating with certification and work to increase going forward. And indicator 39, expand business partnerships for the new programs such as plumbing and identify grants to help. This next one, indicator 38, each and every one of the bullets in 38 has been included in one or more of the previous indicators, so we are on schedule for completion. And with that, in closing, and timely with my presentation tonight, this is Career and Technical Education Month. To celebrate, I have a brief video to share with you that was produced by our very own Communication Services team, spotlighting our many successes with CTE. I also draw your attention to the CTE posters on display as you came into the boardroom tonight, and the video and posters are part of the completion of indicator 27 as discussed earlier in my presentation. And with that, let's view the video. All right, and finally, one last piece of good news. We have some budget work sessions coming up. And the, yes, fun. And the, the first one next week is by itself, so it's not paired with anything else that we're doing, and it starts at 6:00 p.m., so we have the whole evening. There will be two significant changes to the budget process in terms of the staff presentations this year. These are the two major changes. The board authorized a staffing study. So we've heard off and on, it kind of cycles around, you know, are there too many people working in the Cali Building? Are we too overstaffed? Are we too understaffed? We have a presentation at the next regular school board meeting. Therefore, the directors will not be presenting staffing comparisons for each and every department this year. That took a significant amount of time. We will not be doing that because we have an external presentation of that at the board meeting. The second thing that will be different, there are only a handful of budget additions. I think I can count them on one hand because almost all of our new revenue is being utilized on the new students that we have, from the ones that we didn't expect to have who came this year and the ones that we've anticipated for next year. So the individual departmental presentations will be significantly less. Therefore, not promising, but it may be possible that we can cover them all in the first work session, and then it'll be up to the board if they want to do the second work session, if we get them all covered. So that'll just depend on how it goes that evening, and then we will also do our markup session, which will be the third meeting from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. Now, we jump ahead here to the second part of citizens' time. I'm going to ask, instead of going through, calling all the names since it has thinned out substantially, is anyone still here? Just by a show of hands, is anyone, not you guys yet, hold on. Is anyone still here to speak on behalf of the school naming? If you signed up for naming of the school naming, is anyone still here? Okay, so I will go through that. I know, Mr. Fletcher, the school naming, back there, raise your hand. What's your name?
Ms. Bonneres.
Oh, Ms. Bonneres, I see. Okay, got her. Okay, she's on the walk-up. Got it. So if those are only two people who are still on the list that had signed up for the school naming, I will cross everyone off here. With that, we'll have Mr. Emmett Fletcher will be our next speaker. And then after that, Barbara Laramore. Sorry, jumping around here. Kimberly Melman Orosco, Basia Davis, BJ Brown, Joanne Bonneres, and I believe that would be it. So that is the order from here on out. Three minutes, yellow, red, decorum, be nice. You know all the rules. Mr. Fletcher.
Of course. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, and Dr. Walts. I wish to commend you for your decision that you made. I think it was a team effort in naming the school Covington Hampton, not Covington Hampton, Covington Hopper. Sorry about that. But it's a win-win situation, and they are both very happy right now. And as a community, I think we worked through this, and the people spoke, and the board listened to the people and the community. And I like to see win-win situations, and we certainly have this tonight. You guys do a great job. I know a lot of times you get a lot of bad press, but we do thank you. You don't get paid a lot of money, but you earn every penny that you get. So again, thank each and every one of you, and may God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Our next speaker is Ms. Barbara Laramore. Ms. Laramore.
Hi. Congratulations on your special month. Thank you. It's really been nice getting to know your happy faces, especially you, Ms. Williams, Ms. Ralston. I like those smiles. Mr. Wilk, we're going to get some more out of you, buddy. So I know you're not sure why I'm here, but I just want to let you know I'm here for recess. But I was a little afraid that you didn't believe me that people really do want this, so I broke it down into some numbers that might help you. So for my petition for more P in recess, I have 860 signatures. Woo! Thank you, thank you, thank you. For the other nice lady who has a recess, just a recess petition, she has 1,600 signatures, okay? Fox Five, when they did a little piece on recess, yes, they did, they had over 1,200 likes on their page for that piece. So I added it all together, and that was 3,660 people who wanted this change. And again, that was 396 shares, so 396 people shared that with their friends, and I had 305 comments. So I wanted to read to you some of the comments that people were saying with 1 minute and 46 seconds left. So Jessica Peel, whoever this nice lady is, said recess is good for many reasons. They need a bit more of time for free thinking, to socialize, exercise, and build friendships. I say an hour, maybe broken down into two 30-minute breaks. I like Ms. Peel. Dion Jackson Banks, I teach kindergarten in PG County. My students are only allotted 15 minutes for recess. This is not enough time. It takes eight minutes to line up from the cafeteria and walk outside to the playground. Children need more time so they can be more active and socialize. This will cut down some of the behaviors in the classroom. I also think they are rushed when eating lunch. True. One minute left. Okay, from Jennifer Rice, I live here in PWC, and my elementary school-aged child only gets a 15-minute-a-day recess. I think they need more because they, and also the middle schools and high schoolers need more. They have too much to deal without recess. Chris Pescaretta, kids only get 15 minutes of recess now, question mark. Those poor teachers. I think we got 30 to 45 minutes, and it was the only reason we weren't climbing up the walls. True. Nancy Hurting Divine says, I think all elementary school children need at least 30 minutes of recess every day in addition to an organized physical education class two or three times a week. Kids need to move. Kristen Tucker says, I remember having an hour for recess. Now it's 15 minutes, question mark, exclamation point, dot, dot, dot. You're kidding me, question mark, dot, dot, dot. I feel bad for the kids today, dot, dot, dot. No wonder they're getting more stressed out these days. And it goes on and on and on for 300 and some odd comments. So you get the picture. Do it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Melman Orosco.
Hi. The Americans with Disabilities Act defines a disability as a physical or mental impairment. That substantially limits one or more life activities, for example, learning. According to legal precedent, this includes concentrating and remembering. Those are considered major life activities. A student with ADD or ADHD can be considered as somebody who has one of these major life impairments, specifically if they're described as their teachers as having difficulty with assignment completion, attention and concentration, following directions, remaining in seat, among other symptoms. As you can imagine, this definitely and undeniably affects their ability to learn. It should not, however, in any circumstance be used to discriminate. By discriminate, I mean your own regulations. By discriminate, I mean your own regulation, 738-1, which is defined as not giving someone fair consideration or the same opportunity as those similarly situated, including the basis of disability. I'm here today because, I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned that Section 9.4 of the Physical Education Standards of the learning, of, of learning for Virginia Public Schools is being interpreted in a way that can be used to discriminate against persons with the ADD disability. Specifically, receiving an F, 20% for being inattentive in flipping bottles. Receiving a D for not following directions. Receiving a C for being inattentive. These are not grades that are earned by a student. These are grades that are being used to discriminate against a student. As a parent with a student that has a disability, I know that it's been a challenge for me for 15 years, struggling with early childhood education, seeing speech pathologists to overcome speech delays, playing, you know, kind of throwing darts in the dark as far as education, medication, and any other types of remedies. It's extremely difficult, extremely difficult. It shouldn't be as difficult when I'm seeking out assistance from the administrators at my daughter's school, or the superintendent, or other offices. They should actually provide information and seek remedies to facilitate this process. If my daughter's educator is providing me with worksheets that are not mathematically impossible to be calculated that way as far as evaluation, that's a problem. This entire, you know, numerous presentations during this meeting have been evidence-based, looking at different metrics. How are we improving? How are we working towards improvement? Evidence-based metrics, that's what kind of policy is moving towards. Why is my daughter not being graded that way? Why is there no accountability? Why am I having to foresee and oversee the accountability for her educators to provide the same accountability that you're demanding and you're asking for people to present on? You know, everybody's presenting numbers. I would like the same in return so that I can hold the people that are supposed to be educating my daughter accountable for what I think they should be doing for her and others with disabilities. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Basia Davis.
Hi, good evening. My name is Basia Davis. I'm a senior at Forest Park High School, and I have a little handout that I'd like to give the board members. Okay, so I have 2 minutes and 45 seconds. So I'd just like you to follow along here. So this winter was very mild. We haven't had any snow days except for the one snow day that we used to get inauguration off. And my proposal is that we reallocate those snow days to go towards either getting the 10 minutes off at the end of the day, having a couple of three-day weekends during the month of March, since there's no breaks or days off during that month, or getting out a little bit early for summer. And I've done the research, and according to the state of Virginia, as of 2007, you need 990 teaching hours per year. And if we, if we were to do the 10-minute plan, we would have 186 and a half hours over that minimum. If we were to do the three-day weekends in March, every week in March, we'd have 190 hours over the minimum. And if we were to get out 10 days early for summer, we'd have 150 hours over the minimum. And if we were to do all three, we'd still have 95 and a half hours over the minimum. And I know it's been brought to my attention earlier today that it is, you've already handed in your calendar for the year, and it's really hard to change that, but I would really like to push to get those 10 minutes off because I believe five years ago or something, we added those on because of the amount of snow days we have. And we'd really like it if we've got those 10 or even 20 minutes pushed off. The teachers are burned out, the students as well. We just, we really appreciate this break. So yeah, that's all I have. Just think about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is BJ Brown. BJ? BJ?
Good evening. I would like to speak some more this evening about the issues that are plaguing not only our nation, but Virginia. I will be speaking tonight about the epidemics now plaguing many children with misdiagnosed mental illness due to several factors. I'm on the Advisory Board for the Commission on Youth of the State of Virginia. I obtained my master's degree in the Department of Kinesiology Health Services with an emphasis of business and public administration. I've been a director and supervisor for many large facilities for the Navy, Henrico County, and the City of Alexandria, providing various programs for all populations involving thousands of children. For the last three years, I've been exclusively researching and writing a report on the ADHD epidemic, along with other childhood mental illnesses, while helping to review and revise the collection of evidence-based practices for children and adolescents with mental health treatment needs for the state of Virginia. Recently, I authored the House Joint Resolution Number 682, which was submitted by Bob Marshall and co-patroned by a total of 14 delegates and a senator. This study has been placed into the Joint Commission on Healthcare. The purpose, purpose of this study is to examine and identify strategies to ensure that the public is made fully aware of the risks and concerns related to the use of psychiatric medications that have dramatically increased over the last 25 years. The Commission will identify methods to raise awareness of risk related to the mental and physical health side effects of ADHD medication and the risks from the potential of drug addiction. The current problem with ADHD label is that it has become an all-encompassing wastebasket diagnosis for any child who does not quite conform. One of the main studies across the world that has been found is that the youngest in the class are 75% more likely to receive an ADHD diagnosis than their older peers because they're just not as emotionally mature as the older children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Joanne Bonneres. Ms. Bonneres.
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Vice Chair, Mr. Superintendent, and the entire Goss School Board members, thank you for the naming of the Potomac Shores School Covington Harper. It was a number of years ago when I participated in the first naming of a school, and it was the name of Dr. Martin Luther King. Some of you might not have been here then. That was the first one for me. And tonight, we made another bit of history here in Prince William County, and it wasn't planned, and you might need to do a little fact, fact-checking for this. But with the naming of the school also for Colonel John Harper, who is an Alpha, also Admiral Gravely is an Alpha, also Chief Justice Thurgood Marshall. It wasn't a plan, it wasn't a plot, but I want to say thank you. There are four strong Alpha Phi Alpha men in Prince, that schools have been named here in Prince William County. Finally, I'd just like to say, since I am a friend of both Mrs. Covington and Mr. John Harper, my sincere, my most sincere congratulations to both of you, and you have always made Prince William really proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonneres. All right, that, based on the kind of calling everybody, I don't think I missed anybody. Is there anyone who signed up either ahead of time at the door that I missed, that I missed? Okay, with that, Citizens' Comment time is closed, and we're moving on to Board Matters. Ms. Satterwhite, I will start down on your end as soon as I click the right buttons. Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Wow, that's two meetings in a row you started with me. I'll keep it short, I'll keep it short tonight. No, that's okay. I'll take it. Let's see, I'm slowly starting to get it back into my school, my activities with going to schools. I'm slowly adding some things in, so I want to say again to all my constituents and my schools, I appreciate your patience as I've recovered from my knee surgery. And like I said, I'm slowly going to be adding things back in. I still can't attend every event that I'm invited to. I wish I could, but it's just not possible yet as I try to get my energy level back up following surgery. But I want to thank everybody for their understanding and look forward to, let's see, Osborne Park High School, actually, in the Coles District. There is a play that I was invited to by a battlefield high school mom who's a teacher at OP, and I look forward to attending that next week. And we were just talking about Arts Month next month, although they're getting a head start next week, and I'm very much looking forward to that. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's all for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say thank you to Girl Scouts Troop 2173 of Gainesville Middle School and Marsh Steeler Middle School for attending tonight's School Board meeting and do the pledge. My wife Julia has devoted a lot of time to those young ladies since the troop started at Glynn Kirk Elementary, when many of them were in kindergarten. Recently, for a service project, the troop visited Arlington Cemetery to clean up wreaths from the Reese's Across America event that takes place in early December there at the cemetery. Also, Girl Scout Thinking Day, which has been celebrated in this country, or actually around the world since 1926, will be celebrated by our local Girl Scouts troops this Friday evening at Reagan Middle School in Haymarket. And it's a great opportunity for girls to learn more about people and scouts from around the world. I want to say thank you to the Advisory Council at Gainesville Middle School for inviting me to their meeting last week. I enjoyed talking with Ms. Portolucas, the Gainesville teachers and parents, and I look forward to attending additional Advisory Council meetings in the, in the near future at Teak Claywood Elementary and Brentsville District High School. It's definitely been an interesting couple weeks in the Brentsville District since our last board meeting. I've received or been CC'd on, on lots of emails from parents who have concerns about something that's happening to their children or happening at their children's schools. As a parent in Prince William County schools, I know how they feel, and I value their concerns. Like them, I believe it's crucial to be an advocate for your own children. I know I've been an advocate already for my own kids since I've been a Prince William County school parent, and I will continue to do so until they graduate from the school system. I do have some concerns, and we didn't show it tonight, so I appreciate that, about the tone of animosity that's been hanging over this county like a dark cloud, waiting to explode into a massive thunderstorm. We're seeing it at the state and national levels as well. Like many in this country, I took my children to see the new Batman Lego movie over the weekend. Don't know if anybody else did that. In addition to the witty dialogue, I enjoyed the use of the, the many pop songs that I listened to during the 1980s. One of those songs, Michael Jackson's "Man in the Mirror," which we were actually, I think, talking about a little bit earlier in our closed session, along with Getting Some Work Done, was a song that, with those words that stuck with me then and they still do today. It's where it still makes sense. In order to make a change, self-reflection has to take place. In addition, a recent speech by Florida Senator Marco Rubio on the Senate floor stuck with me over the last week. Speaking to his colleagues last week on the, on the Senate floor, he expressed these words, and I'll quote him, "I don't know of a single nation in the history of the world that has been able to solve its problems when half of the people in the country absolutely hate the other half of the people in that country. This is the most important country in the world, and this body cannot function if people are offending one another, and this is why these rules are in place." In addition, I'll quote him again, "In this country, if you watch the big policy debates that are going on in America, no one stops to say, 'I think you are wrong. I understand your point of view.' I get it, you have some valid points, but let me tell you why I think my view is better. I don't hear that anymore." Here's what I hear almost automatically, and let me be fair, from both sides of these debates. Immediately, immediately, as soon as you offer an idea, the other side jumps and says that the reason you say that is because you don't care about poor people, because you only care about rich people, because you are this, or you are that, or you are the other. And I'm just telling you guys, we are reaching a point in this republic where we are not going to be able to solve the simplest of issues because everyone is putting themselves in the corner where everybody hates everybody." Unquote. Rubio's right. We've definitely seen examples of his concerns from this governing body the last year or more, and we're seeing it now between our students in Prince William County schools. We can do better. I can do better. In fact, all of us, board members, parents, students, teachers, administrators, et cetera, we can benefit from a little self-reflection. Let's make sure we're setting the right tone in our homes, our classrooms, our schools, and our communities. None of us are perfect, that's a given, but we can work to improve so we're spreading something other than the us-versus-them mentality that's way too prevalent at this moment. As one, we can make a much greater difference locally and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, I wasn't planning on mentioning it, but I want to kind of piggyback on Mr. Brown's comments and just say that I am someone who is a firm believer in dialogue and healthy dialogue, whether we agree or disagree. But I think Mr. Brown may have been alluding to a situation that was in the paper, and I just want to make note that while we should agree to disagree and have civil conversations, we need to dialogue. Being afraid to talk is not any better than talking with hate language or, or things of that nature. And I think that I just kind of wanted to add in, to addition to what you said, that it, it's important to have those discussions. And I think as a country, we, and, and as a county, we've kind of shied away from that for fear of offending, or saying, or not knowing what to say. So maybe it's time we start learning how to talk again to each other, not just about each other or a certain topic. So thank you for bringing that up, because I think that, that oftentimes, we get a little intimidated to open our mouths and, and even start the conversation for fear of being attacked. And sometimes, all you need to do is just start it and see where it goes, if everyone's in the same mindset to learn from each other. And thanks for saying that. Any, in other news, I want to give a shout out to Ms. Berm, can you say her name? Bermu, Bermu? No, Bermu, Bermudes, the young lady who came?
Oh, yeah.
You say it much better than me, and I'm horrible and chop up names.
How do I say it?
I don't know, but you.
Bermudes.
Bermudes, thank you. My brain couldn't get it out. I just wanted to thank her for coming and speaking to us as a board. I've been in a position as a young woman and in my adult life of being the only female there, or the only one in a room, or the only one taking the job, or whatever the case may be. So I wanted to applaud her for not only coming to speak to us, but for setting that path for others to follow behind her. And I just wanted to make note of that publicly, because it is a big deal, especially in HVAC. I served for a little while as a facility manager, and I was fortunate enough to be surrounded by engineers and janitorial staff and everyone that is involved in that job, from tenants to, you know, the garbage man that we contracted out to. And it's something that when you are the only female, if you're not blessed enough to be supported by the people, your coworkers, it can be very stressful. So I just think that that is outstanding. I wanted to remind parents that we are in the thick of scheduling, so if you haven't seen a schedule come home from your students, or you haven't talked to them about what they're planning on doing, now's a good time. It's never too late. And it is really important. I have a high schooler, and so I'm sure he's not alone in his high school dialogue with me, which basically amounts to, I haven't seen my counselor yet, and I don't know what I'm gonna do. So, a couple more open-ended questions with your student, and you might find out more wonderful things of what's going on in their life in terms of scheduling for next year. And as our lovely superintendent mentioned today about our CTE programs and all of our dual enrollment and all of those things, it's not just for high schoolers. We have at the middle school level, and we even have elementary schools that do foreign language. I believe we have two, I think of, that are interbaccalaureate elementary schools that you can learn foreign language at. So it's at every level, and it's important, and it's a great way to have a conversation with your student about their future and what their goals are. I wanted to thank Mr. Bixby and Mr. Neves for coming to make their presentation tonight. I am a die-hard supporter of both of their work ethics, and I have seen them in action, and I cannot say it enough. And it is not to say that we don't have that in our school system in other places. They were just the spotlight for tonight, and I wanted to make sure that I piggybacked on that, because I appreciate all of the work that they do, and I appreciate all of the work that Principal Neves puts in for his school and in the surrounding community and for his students. So I wanted to make sure that he was acknowledged for that. I wanted to thank Associate Superintendent Ms. Goss and our Governor's School Director, Jason Calhoun, who has left the building, for inviting the students who came and presented tonight. I also am blessed in being able to serve as the chair for the Governor's School for Prince, on Prince William County's side. And the students are absolutely amazing. And it, to me, what makes it even more special is they are day-to-day regular students. They don't go to Thomas Jefferson, they haven't left our county in search of an extreme magnet school somewhere. These are students who are applied to a Governor's School because they have an interest in science and math. And I think it's important that we recognize that these are students who work hand-in-hand with other students as CTE programming. I mean, it's not just math and science. They have to, like the Innovation Program, reach out into the community and work with others across the board. And I think sometimes we tend to stick students who go into specialty programs as certain groups, as those kind of kids or these kind of kids, but they're not. We're, they're all kids. Their brain is just a little bit more excited about science. Their brain is just a little bit more excited about science or math than someone else's brain, and I just think it's fabulous that we are able to spotlight them. And I'm just kind of a science nerd, so I was able to see the presentations from all the students when I, at the meeting, and it was just amazing. And I just, yeah, I was over here bouncing in my chair, because the robotic one, they weren't able to, to show you all the work that they do, they were, or, excuse me, are doing. But I don't know if anybody has seen Big Hero Six. I think it's probably the most layman translation I can think of, or Star Wars, where they're fighting, and the robots come out, and they make this big giant war thing and take out a ship. I know that's horrible language, but it, that's what it reminded me of. And just to see that from our students, I think is absolutely amazing. There was another presentation from a group of students that's not here tonight on worms and the effect of pollutants in our environment, and they grow worms and trap, I mean, it's just, it's fantastic. And I know that our CTE program students and our specialties program students are also doing amazing work. And it just brings me such joy to know that these students will go out into the world and work collaboratively together and share their skills. And then to the students who came for the snow days, I want to applaud you for coming to the board and giving your opinion and doing all that research and coming in front of us. I'm not a fan of, like, shortening the school year, because I like learning, I'm kind of nerdy that way. But I think it's awesome that you came and you shared with us. We're not all gonna agree on everything, and I just think that's great. So thank you for taking the time, thank you for staying late, and for all the data that you put in your presentation, as well as signs. It's nice to see students come, not just say, hey, can we get off school early, but you have the research to show. So that's fabulous, and I commend you for that. I just want to throw in a little caveat, is it does snow in March, so maybe April's good for next time. My son was born in March. I have pictures where we're on the basketball court barbecuing. We also have pictures with Snowfort, so it's toss-up in Virginia. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Froston.
Sorry, I wasn't ready. Thank you. I wanted to thank Garfield High School. Yesterday, I went to lunch, and I was invited by the Special Ed Department. Well, it wasn't the department, it was a classroom. And the students prepared most of the lunch. They cut up the salads and the eggs and did all of these things to prepare for the luncheon that they were hosting. And I was very excited about it, because these are kids that we normally think can't do, because they have a particular label. We need to stop that. We really got to stop that. If you go over there to have lunch with them, please, just, just go have lunch. Watch them cook for you. Watch them prepare the meal. And watch them enjoy eating it themselves, too. So I thank Garfield for that. This morning, I did a breakfast, well, an early morning, at Penn Elementary School, working with, listening to some of the teachers and what they were having to say about how they're going to rise up and bring their test scores and all of our data up. It's always interesting to listen to people talk about that, because sometimes you have to stop and think, are we really all on the same page? Sometimes I wonder if we're really, even though we're all saying the same thing, but are we really on the same page? When it gets right down to the nitty-gritty, are we working in the same direction? I'm never too sure these days, because everybody has their own opinion on how things work. And I think that's a good thing. But I leave a lot of this up to the staff here in this Kelly Building to come and say, this is the way we're looking at it. And I expect them to know what they're talking about, from PE classes to recess. And I have, I have yet to hear a report on recess. So Superintendent, if you get an opportunity, in between all the other 90 million things you're doing, can we have a recess? Do we have it? He just gave it to us?
Yes.
Oh, they, well, see, I didn't check my email. Well, see, he's ahead of me, because I didn't check my email. Very good. This is excellent, Superintendent. What else did I need? That was about all for this week. This week has been a little bit, a little bit more on a slower side as for attending school things. Most of my schools are, right now, are, are very happy. But let me, let me thank, there's a couple of other people I need to thank, and we need to talk about trips that we're going on and schools we're going to look at and see if there's anything that we can bring back that might be of some assistance to us here in this division. Nope. I think that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Froston. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna try to be quick. First off, a big shout-out to the students who came and presented on the HVAC program going on. It's incredible present, incredible program going, and the more that we can continue to expand, promote these types of programs and other CTE programs we have, and really the, the opportunities that it opens up for people is, is a good thing. And in that vein, we just heard a fair bit from the superintendent as well in that vein. And really, these are opportunities for kids to, to take advantage of. And we had one kid talking about how he was gonna graduate high school with 19 college credits. That's, that's money in the bank, that, and faster time to graduation and getting a job, job certifications, a lot of exciting things there. Also, major hats off to the students from the Governor's School, some pretty impressive presentations. And I just want to give a, a special shout-out to someone who really worked really hard to make the Governor's School happen, and that would be Dr. Otagby. He worked incredibly hard, pushed, pushed very aggressively to make that a reality. And that's something to be very proud of as a, as a school division. And, oh, and, and the last thing. I actually, the very, the students we just heard talking about the snow days, I actually have heard a lot of comments from that in the, in the community, and I really think that we should add that to the agenda in April and look at possibly what we do with that extra time. Because that's, I, I think there's some, some potential there, and we've got those built-in snow days, and if we've got a lot of extra time, let's, let's relook at it. So I, I hope we can, we can take a look at that in April.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Mr. Wilk.
Yeah. Look at Forest Park in the house, right? Major, quick, we'll go quick. Couple shout-outs, and want to congratulate, boy, Potomac is dominating again in basketball and wrestling. Unfortunately, I didn't get to be there and hold up the cool thing and stuff, I was gone, but I will go to one of their playoff games. But the Potomac Boys Basketball, fourth consecutive conference 15 championship. Potomac Boys Wrestling, also a conference championship. First time since 85. Tonight, the 80s have been a big talk. Yeah. Good memories. Good times, I was two. Forest Park, do you want to give a shout-out? First of all, I want to shout-out, and stay around, guys, if you don't fall asleep. Hopefully, this will get done soon. I want to get a group shot, and we recognize you guys for coming again and your presentation. I was talking with Dr. Waltz, and at least one thing we were talking about is giving an explanation about the snow days. I know you were referring, you referenced the calendar that I tried explaining to Robbie real quick on Twitter about what was going down. So we'll give you a thorough explanation about the snow day thing and see what options are. But I, I do want to mention, Forest Park, my wife does have a musical coming up this weekend. Nice work, if you can get it. She's been, her and Laura Britton have been working very hard with their cast of over 40 students. So fortunately, my in-laws are come, are here right now, so I can go see the show tomorrow night. So that'll be cool. I have been gone, like, for seven days. One of the cool thing about it is, up in Michigan, I did visit 15 different school districts, and always taking best practices. And there's one particular one, Dr. David Richards, who's the superintendent of Fraser High School, a little district in Macomb County, which became a big focus on election night for those of you who stayed up late, that popped in. And doing some great things with a, a population, a very, in a way, a population that's dealing with issues like poverty, shrinking enrollment unlike us. So it's just cool to see different things and how they're doing creative things with their spaces. So cool stuff like that. Finally, on Friday, oh, I do want to mention that out of, you know, all 15, I've talked to all 15 superintendents, and I always ask school board-related questions. And one, one of the school board does go to about 12, 1 o'clock in the morning typically, so, you know, we're right on there. But one thing I do want to note is, all 15, and just again, a commonality, is the chairman does control the agenda, which I do appreciate tonight in the sense that we are getting out at 10:00. So it's very common for that approach to happen. And then I want to mention, on Friday, I will be visiting Potomac High School, Mary Williams, Potomac Middle School, Dumfries, and Triangle, so I'll be busy on my day off, but visiting schools as well. So thank you all for being here tonight. Oh, thank you, Ms. Garrity, for motivating the kids again. Keep on having them come out.
I'll be very brief. On the snow days thing, I brought this up last year. I'm, I'm sorry, you're right, Ms. Jessie. I forgot about my new order, Ms. Jessie. I forget that you go right before me now. Ms. Jessie, you're now recognized. I'll still be very brief when it's my turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I think I have a slide for this, my last presentation here for board matters. These are, when we talk about having challenges and race relations, Prince William County was lauded as one of the most, not nonviolent, but progressive in how they integrated schools. And many of you know that Fannie Fitzgerald was named, that school was named after her. And it wasn't until that school naming that I really understood what happened in Prince William County. Prince William County is historical, because instead of having people fighting, people at doors, shouting names, Prince William County decided to integrate its public schools by using four ladies. There were Fannie Fitzgerald, Mary Porter, where you have Porter Elementary, Zella Brown, and Maxine Coleman. Ms. Fitzgerald has passed away. Ms. Mary Porter has passed away. Ms. Zella Brown is alive and very busy. In fact, I invited her to the boardroom, but she said, "I'm just too busy, honey." So, and Ms. Maxine Coleman is living in Maryland. My, when Fannie Fitzgerald was named, a lot of people think that I had, it was my idea. It wasn't really, it was Denise McPhail. And Denise McPhail is the executive director and founder of K-PAC. And K-PAC is a theatrical company that she founded, and she has been doing small plays all over the county. Most of us who went to see The Wiz were really impressed with her work. She has established a partnership with Cogan High School. So this is Theater Month, and I think it's important. And it's also African-American History Month. But Denise establishes partnership, and she asked me to come over two Saturdays ago to meet these kids at Cogan High School, because she and I were just having this chat, because during the time that we were establishing this partnership with Prince William County, and Sparks came in, and we decided that we would establish a partnership for her company to work out of Cogan. And somehow, this idea of the Courageous Four Women came up. So she is writing a play called The Courageous Four. It is going to be historic, and it's going to be done at Cogan High School, probably in 2018, January of 2008, February of 2018. She's established this partnership, and so last Saturday, she asked me to come over and share the information on the Civil Rights Movement. Many people in this room know that I was a part of that movement. But she brought in these young people. 125 students from Cogan High School showed up to be a part of this play. And they, she, she's going to help them in these classes. They're called master classes, and they have made storyboards. And she and Mr. Healy, Dr. Healy, Dr. Healy was there. I just want to congratulate, one, Prince William County, because we always talk about these negative things. It wasn't negative for us. These four women were, on one day, were moved into these schools overnight. And one was school was Antioch McCray, and I told Dr. Waltz, "One of your schools is Antioch McCray." Fannie Fitzgerald worked at Antioch McCray across Thoroughfare Road, because, believe it or not, the western end of the county was Title I. And now it's shifted. But she, that particular school, and I've also asked Dr. Waltz to look at, tonight, when we name those two schools together. I recall, I started doing research on it, because that became a theme, in fact, the night of the community meeting, if he remembers. I called him, and I said, "You know what? This room is divided." I think you remember that. And I said, "I think this school should be named for both people." And so I started doing research on it, and Garfield High School was the, the first African-American Joyce, Joyce Coleman walked into that school. And the person that we need to give more accolades to is Mr. Herb Saunders and Superintendent Bevel. They were the genius who decided, we're not gonna have controversy in Prince William County. We're going to, they opened the schools up, the kids, many people decided to stay in their schools. But Joyce Coleman and these four ladies integrated Prince William County schools, and I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And to Mr. Harper, because I know I was able to, I didn't want to take a great deal of time. I've known both of these, both, Mr. Harper, both have been mentors to me. So I want to congratulate this board for taking something that could have been very negative and making it into something very positive. And I have asked Dr. Waltz a week or so ago, that he find the Garbers. I live on their property, really, in my division. They own that boating place down in Minneville, and the Manor Hills. And see if we can put pictures of these people in those schools. And Washington and Reed, they have passed away, but I think we need to make sure that their history is enshrined in those buildings. Antioch McCray, I'm told, has been torn down. I don't know, it was on Thoroughfare Road, but if that little building is there, but some way to recognize these people, I would really appreciate your doing that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Just wanted, talking on the snow days thing, I just wanted to bring it up, that I had brought this up last year, I think we had about three extra days left, or I'd sent an email to Mr. Klein, and he'd gotten an answer back to me about the savings, the savings potential on an unused snow day. Again, this was last year's estimates, I won't hold them to it this year, was it roughly about $100,000, you know, per unused day? So I'm very open to the conversation on, on what's allowed, what's within the superintendent's purview, what's kind of those types of things, not guaranteeing anything, but, but I certainly think it's, it's a worthwhile discussion. If there is a significant number of days, then it's worth a discussion. But again, I think a lot of that falls under, under the academic side, certainly under the superintendent's area, for sure. So I think it's an interesting conversation, and I think any, any way the school board can save money, they should certainly look at, but they need to understand, we need to understand kind of what, what the rules and laws are while we do it. But with that, it was a good day. I was very impressed by the student speakers. We had several different student speakers on several different topics, and I was very impressed with the oratorical skills of our students, including those still in the room, but those, those who, those who weren't here as well. So with that, and no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned.